Have four, three, two, and one.
Welcome to the city council meeting of June seventeen twenty twenty one. City clerk, please.
This meeting is compliant with the governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty issued on March seventeen twenty twenty, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the city council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar listed below. City council meetings can also be viewed live and are on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com forward slash Brisbane CA, or on Comcast Channel twenty-seven. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org forward slash meetings. To address the council, the city council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The city council agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications, one and two, or during an item. Email ipedia@brisbaneca.org, text six-two-eight-two-one-nine-two-nine-two-two. Join the Zoom webinar with a webinar ID nine-nine-one-nine-three-six-two-eight-six-six-six with the passcode one-two-three-four-five-six and the caller number one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact me at four-one-five-five-oh-eight-two-one-one-three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you. Madam Mayor, please unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, everybody. Item one is seven thirty-six, call to order and the pledge of allegiance withdrawal. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
One nation
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the roll call. City clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lance.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Here, thank you. City attorney, can we get a report out from closed session, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, in closed session, the council took up and considered two claims before the city to claim item two-two-two and claim item two-two-three, which both arise from the same underlying facts of January twenty-third of this year that council voted to reject those claims consistent with the recommendation of Bay Cities JPLA, which is the insurance management service for the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, adoption of the agenda. Would any council member like to amend tonight's meeting agenda?
I would, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Well, actually, it's the consent calendar, so I should probably wait. Sorry.
Okay. All right, can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda?
So move to adopt agenda.
Again.
You got it.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham.
Aye, thank you. Item number four, awards and presentations. Item A is a presentation from PG&E, Bill Chang and Frank Fraun from PG&E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. This is Bill Chang, your local Public Affairs PG&E rep. Thank you for this opportunity for myself and for my partner here, Frank Frauney, to do a quick update regarding what PG&E is doing and has been doing in terms of preparing for this upcoming peak wildfire season. As you know, wildfire season in California has pretty much become year-round, as indicated this past this past January, PG&E actually had to declare a PSPS or Public Safety Power Shut-Off. It did not affect the Bay Area, but it was a very unusual January that we had to declare one. As you can see on your screens, this is one of two slides that we prepared earlier in May that I sent to your city manager to kind of show a visual example of what PG&E has been doing. One of the things that's not on the slides is some new criteria that PG&E has implemented on the recommendation of the federal court. And what the new criteria is, is PG&E has taken into consideration what we're calling over-strike trees. What an over-strike tree is, is a tree that the height of the tree exceeds the distance that the tree is from a electrical line. For example, if an eighty-foot tree is fifty feet away from a line, then that tree is considered an over-strike risk to that particular line. There's approximately five-point-two million over-strike trees in PG&E's service territory. We have no plans to do that kind of clear-cutting to take care of those over-strike trees. But what we did do is, we took the over-strike criteria and we overlaid it onto ten years of weather patterns looking back. And we produced new computer models to show if the over-strike criteria had been used for the past ten years, how many PSPS events would San Mateo County have encountered each year, on average, each year for the past ten years? So, the old criteria, the computer model put out that San Mateo County would have seen approximately one-point-seven PSPS events each year for the past ten years. When we overlaid the new over-strike criteria on the ten years of weather, the model came out to approximately two-point-four PSPS events per year for the past ten years. So the difference is not a lot, but I wanted to mention that, so you're aware. Brisbane's location is well away from the weather patterns we've seen. Last year, the two PSPS events that happened in San Mateo County primarily were focused in that south-southern corner of the peninsula, Half Moon Bay, Potola Valley, Woodside, Pescadero, that area, heavily wooded, little population, still some population, and some of that area went farther south into Santa Cruz County. So, I'm gonna stop there and hand this off to my PG&E partner, Frank Frauney. Frank Frauney is one of PG&E's public safety specialists. However, before Frank joined PG&E, he spent approximately thirty, thirty-four years with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District, retiring as a division chief. So Frank, are you with us?
I am, Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Bill? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you. Thank you for the introduction and thank you for inviting us to the meeting tonight. Over the past few years, we've made quite a few improvements to our PSPS to make them shorter in duration, smaller in size, and less impact on the community. And as the slide shows up on your screens there, we've done quite a bit as far as enhancements. We've done quite a bit in vegetation enhancement in nineteen, excuse me, two thousand twenty, with sixty-six miles of line. Vegetation enhancements in two thousand twenty-one, we've done additional eleven miles. We've added several reclosures and sexualizing devices, two thousand twenty, we've added forty-three, we've added nineteen more in two thousand twenty-one. We've done a little bit of system hardening. We did two miles in two thousand twenty and five miles in two thousand twenty-one. A couple of new things, specifically to San Mateo County, you've got quite a few high-definition cameras for our wildfire camera resources, which the fire department and the county dispatch centers have access to as well as the public. We've added approximately six cameras already, and we have another four more. We're actually working with South San Francisco Fire to possibly add an additional camera on Sign Hill. We've added eleven weather stations. We have a few more in process for two thousand twenty-one. To add those, and those weather stations are available to the general public as well. Most of the fire agencies utilize our information from our meteorology and our weather reports and our cameras to predict and utilize during fires and utilize during emergency management activities. Is there another slide? You go to the next slide, please? During the PSPS, we have a number of community resource centers. We implement those, the community resource centers, we implemented five this last year. We have approximately eight of them already in place in several locations throughout the county, mostly in the impacted areas. In our community resource centers, we provide information to the public, a place for them to charge their batteries, pick up water, pick up charging systems for their cell phones, also to charge medical devices. Those are, the locations we utilized this past year have been in La Honda, Pescadero, and Half Moon Bay where the extent of the PSPS's are, but we have them pre-designated throughout the county. We provide you with those locations if you choose to. If we do initiate a PSPS, we give advanced notice to all the local jurisdictions. We use County OES as our single point of contact, and we're navigating through San Mateo County OES, and then they disseminate the information down. We also have all the information on our websites. If you want to learn about it, it's pg.com/psps or pg.com/wildfirealerts. You can find all the information on those websites. And one thing I do want to remind everybody that a PSPS is in no relation to the Cal ISO energy shed where they do roving blackouts. Those are completely separate. And I'll ask Bill maybe to talk a little about those, because we're actually in a warning stage right now for one in San Mateo County that could possibly happen today and then again tomorrow. Any questions for me?
I have none. Anybody else have any questions?
I'd like to ask one, Madam Mayor.
Of course.
It's Colleen. Could you tell us, you mentioned there there were six camera, high-definition cameras installed. Are any of those on San Bruno Mountain?
Yes, actually, we're looking at one right now on San Bruno Mountain. We have one on Sweeney Ridge as well. One at College of San Mateo, Skyline College, Kenyatta College. We're looking at another on La Honda. I can actually provide all the information where the current sites are and a list. You can go on a website, alertwildfire.com. It'll show all the cameras. It's open to the public domain. You see all the cameras we have in California. We are working on one in San Bruno Mountain.
Those distribution sectionalizing devices, since we have transmission lines going over the mountain, are any of those devices installed on those lines?
They're typically not on transmission devices, because the transmission lines that come over the hill are typically are larger lines, and those are in the one-hundred-and-fifteen to two-hundred-and-thirty KV line. The sectionalizing devices are devices added in neighborhoods in the distribution system. And you kind of think of them as like circuit breakers in your house. Instead of shutting off the entire house or the entire town of Brisbane, we add a bunch of circuit breakers in there so we can isolate specific areas, a lot smaller, like a bathroom or a kitchen or a garage, eliminate just to those areas. So that's what the sectionalizing devices actually do. They take our grid and make it smaller so we can sectional off specific places versus larger locations.
Good, thank you very much.
Frank, could you just repeat the website, alert dot whatever the rest of the website was, please?
And I'll provide all this information to Bill and send you links to all these sites, along with all the PG sites. But if you go on our PG site, you can go on our PG site and actually access the cameras and our weather stations as well. But Alert Wildfire is the best location to access all the cameras that we have put up in conjunction with other agencies in the state. We work with local agencies to support us, but PG has been paying for those cameras and the installation for them.
Thanks very much.
And if I may add, Madam Mayor, if you look at the map that's on your screen right now, and that map is available online, it's actually a CPUC map. So that map shows the tier-three and tier-two high-fire threats, tier-three being the extreme and tier-two being elevated. Again, it's, those are CPUC designated fire maps. And if you look where Pacifica is, so if you draw a line from Pacifica across to the bay, nothing north of that line is in any of the tier-two or tier-three areas, including Brisbane. So Brisbane, I think almost all of Daly City, Colma, none of those communities are in any tier-two or tier-three high-fire risk areas.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do you have some more for us?
I'm sorry?
You have some more for us?
No, that's mainly it. I, of course, I am the Public Affairs Rep for all of San Mateo County, covering all twenty-twenty-one jurisdictions. So I am available to the city of Brisbane twenty-four-seven, and Clay knows where to find me, how to find me at any time.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm the representative for all the law enforcement, fire agencies, County OES, and emergency service for San Mateo County, and all those agencies have my direct contact with fire police and contact me anytime. And Bill and I work together. If Phil's not available, I can cover for him, and if I'm not available, Bill also covers for me, so we're a tag team at this.
Great, thank you very much for the presentation. It was really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, talk to you soon. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item B, which is presentation from San Bruno Mountain Watch by Ariel Chabowski. Ariel, take it away.
Ariel is also being joined by Raina Khan, one of the Board of Directors. Ariel, can you hear us? There you go.
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you very much, and sorry for the delay. I think my computer was slow in rejoining the meeting. Is it okay to start with the presentation? Thank you very much. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm trying to share it, but it says that the host disabled attendee screen sharing.
Let me make you go ahead and try now.
Perfect. Is that working now for everybody?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I want to begin by thanking the honorable Madam Mayor for hosting me today and all the Brisbane City Council members, the city staff as well, and all the members of the public. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to present to you. And I also appreciate that one of the members of my Board of Directors is also here to present, so she is here to say hello to.
Hi, this is Raina Khan. I'm a fairly new member on the Board of Directors of San Bruno Mountain Watch, and it's also my very first city council meeting.
Thank you, Raina, and I also want to express thanks to the whole Board of Directors for their support and also to my coworker, Carly. Today, I'll be presenting initially just also supporting the city of Brisbane for all the support that you provide us. I wanted to give a glimpse of our response as an organization to the COVID-nineteen pandemic over the past year and conclude by highlighting some of our ongoing programs, projects, and upcoming events. The city was very, very generous in supporting San Bruno Mountain Watch last year with a five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar grant. It was really amazing, the support you provided us and to other local nonprofits in Brisbane, and so thank you again for doing so. During the past year, we had to adapt in many ways, doing things in different ways like everybody. And so I wanted to give a glimpse of some of the things that we did. Plant sales at the Mission Blue Nursery are such an important community gathering event for us and support for our organization. And we weren't able last year to have three of our four plant sales. And so one thing that we did was we took the opportunity to develop an online plant menu called the Mission Blue Menu. It features about ninety or so of the mountain's native plants that we grow. And we're able to feature those, provide a lot of photos of those plants, and also allow people to sort them by a lot of different categories, anything from the color of flowers to drought-tolerant plants, plants that nourish wildlife, and other categories. And so we found that people were still able to, you know, in smaller quantities, as people were still looking to garden a lot during the past year and spending that time at home, still able to connect with the plants of San Bruno Mountain, put in their order through the menu, and come and pick them up in a safe and individual way. And we are also happy that people appreciated this menu, not only as a way to be able to purchase plants safely, but also as a way to learn about the plants of San Bruno Mountain. Another challenge was how to continue providing volunteer opportunities at our nursery and on the mountain. And so we implemented health and safety plans for each of our, for the nursery and also for the mountain as well, and strive to keep people engaged in our programs while keeping everyone safe. One of the challenges to doing so was just helping people register in the context of size limits and limits on how many people could be in one place at once. And so we set up also an online registration system that allowed us to devise different shifts that were staggered across different times and with the ability to specify size limits, so people could volunteer individually as a household and eventually with a small number of different households. And we found that worked really well, and that people really appreciated volunteering on the mountain and at the nursery, having that peaceful and beautiful time to be outside. And we also definitely appreciated still being able to connect with our community and all the help that they provide us at the nursery and for our restoration projects. The last thing I wanted to highlight in terms of our response to the pandemic was developing resources for people to learn about the mountain at home. And so we were able to still participate in hosting a San Bruno Mountain Conference and posting all the videos and talks from that conference online, continued adding historical materials to our digital archives, and also developed educational curriculum for youth that we're still working to grow. And we received a lot of support from other organizations as well in this effort. Apart from those examples of how we responded to the pandemic, I also wanted to take a little bit of time today to feature a few of our ongoing projects and programs. Each of these aspires to these two main goals, to inspire appreciation for the natural and cultural histories of San Bruno Mountain through a variety of platforms, experiences, and materials, and also to provide opportunities for people of all ages and backgrounds to communally care for the mountain. So a few examples, one is our effort to restore the San Bruno Mountain dunes involving youth from the west side of the mountain and removing invasive plants like ice plant to benefit the habitat of endangered flower like the San Francisco lacinia, pictured in yellow there, and the San Francisco spine flower, a rare flower, and other dune flora. We're also working to recreate the San Bruno Mountain Botanical Garden. This is at the park entrance to San Bruno Mountain State and County Park. Initially, there was a garden established in the early two thousands by a different organization. That garden was eventually abandoned when stock group disbanded, and we're working to recreate a new garden at the same location, featuring a hundred of the mountain's native plants, as well as a lot of different stories about the mountain's history and make it a really focal place for park visitors when they arrive to the mountain. So these are some photos on the left of the historic garden as it was being created in the early two thousands and the bottom right from one of the more recent volunteer events in twenty twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty nineteen. And of course, I just wanted to take some time to highlight how important our Mission Blue Nursery is in supporting all of these efforts, growing the plants from San Bruno Mountain that are planted back on the mountain and are provided to other restoration projects on the peninsula. We really couldn't do this work without the help of so many volunteers. These pictures are pre-pandemic, who come out each week to help us grow our plants and take care of our nursery, and our nursery manager, Carly, as well, pictured in the bottom right. We're really excited to welcome people back to our lovely nursery. And later this year, we're really happy that we're going to be hosting the Pancake Breakfast and Plant Sale in September and another plant sale again in December, and then going back to hosting quarterly sales throughout two thousand twenty-two. We also had a really wonderful time at a recent event with the city, and Raina is going to talk a little bit about that experience.
Hi, yeah, so I want to first thank all of our partners with our partners with Brisbane Parks and Rec and Public Works and Open Space and Ecology Committee and our sponsors and volunteers for helping us with all of these volunteer events that we have. This last Saturday, I participated in an event up on Buckeye Canyon removing scabiosa invasive weeds to help the butterfly habitat regain some of their habitat, native habitat up there. And I've been fortunately been able to be a part of a lot of these events for the last several years, taking a little hiatus when my son was born, but he's almost ready to join us in the next few events, maybe next year. But these are really incredible events that I think bring together the community and really teach a lot about the mountain and the natives and invasives and how we can work together to protect it. So I want to thank the council and all of our partners for helping support this.
Yeah, thank you so much, Brisbane. We both share deep love for San Bruno Mountain, and thank you again for the opportunity to present to you tonight. And Raina and I can take any questions or comments.
Thanks, Ariel. Thanks, Raina. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you guys for the work that you do in the rest of Mountain Watch and volunteers. It really adds to the quality of our community. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for a great job on helping us to protect San Bruno Mountain, someplace we all love and really brings something special to our community. So thank you.
Elaine, do you have any comments?
Yes, I would hope that even if you have in-person plant sales, that you continue showing the full breadth of all those different really great plants that you have online. I tried to buy some, and unfortunately, everything I wanted was sold out. So I'm hoping you have more supply, but it's really great to have that preview. So even if you show up, you know what you're looking for. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. We'll definitely keep the Mission Blue Menu up there for people to browse the plants and we are gonna get more plants growing so you can bring some to your garden. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Do you guys take donations of pots?
We do take donations of one-gallon pots. People can drop them off at the front fence.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thanks very much.
Can I say something?
Oh, of course.
Well, I'm so excited that you guys are having your Pancake Breakfast this year. I'm really looking forward to that. I've been told that whenever San Bruno Mountain Watch selects the date for the Pancake Breakfast, it's automatically good weather. So I hear you guys have a special talent in doing that, so I'm excited this year. Um, and it feels just like, you know, yet another thing that's happening in our community that helps us feel like we're getting back to normal in some way. So, um, you can't wait to partake in that and see, you know, so many familiar faces that I haven't seen in a while. So congratulations on being able to move forward with that. And this is always one of my favorite presentations every year. So good job as always. Thank you.
Thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you at the breakfast.
Any further questions, comments from anybody? Okay, Ariel, Raina, thank you so much for the presentation and we will see you soon and have a great evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so moving on to item C. Really excited to, to say that we have a Juneteenth proclamation. You know, I've lived in the United States for 20 something years and I have to say, it's only the last couple of years that I even heard about this. So we do not do a good job at educating anybody about our history as it should be. So without further ado, here is our Juneteenth proclamation, which I will now read into the record and I feel very honored to be able to do this. Whereas Juneteenth, Juneteenth is often referred to as our country's second Independence Day and has long been celebrated amongst the African-American community. Its historical significance has largely been omitted from our classrooms, making it relatively unknown to the larger community. And whereas despite the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln and passage of the 13th Amendment by the US Congress, more than 250,000 enslaved Africans and their descendants remained in bondage in the state of Texas until the arrival of Union troops at Galveston on the 19th day of June, 1865. And whereas when the news of their emancipation spread, following the reading of General Order Number Three by Major General Gordon Granger, the former enslaved people of Texas reacted with joyous celebrations, launching what would become an annual event known as Juneteenth. And whereas early celebrations of Juneteenth consisted of family and community gatherings filled not only with special food and festivities, but also prayer, reflection and the respect for ancestors who suffered under slavery. And whereas the observance of Juneteenth evolved over time, leading up to January 1, 1980, when Texas became the first state in the nation to formally establish Juneteenth as an official holiday. And whereas Juneteenth, Juneteenth celebrations continue to grow within communities and organizations through the country, helping promote knowledge and appreciation of African-American history, resilience, family, community and culture. And whereas on June 18th, 2020, the city council adopted Resolution Number 2020 dash 47, affirming the city's commitment to stand in solid, solid solidarity with the black community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Brisbane hereby proclaim Saturday, June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth and encourage all community members to observe this day with activities and reflections of freedom and justice dated June 17, 2021. I feel very proud to have brought that. Thank you, everybody. So moving on now to oral communications, number one. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on an item that is not on our agenda?
We have one raised hand. Madam Mayor from Roland.
Roland, go ahead, please.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Council, Roland de Brant San Jose. Uh, I just wanted to give you a quick heads up that the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 was replaced by a new executive order yesterday, name eight, dash eight, dash 21. And the, um, Brownach, Brownach section is actually contained within paragraph 44. Um, so I'll be forwarding this to, uh, yourselves and, uh, indeed momentarily. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roland. Anybody else, Sigrid?
Members of the public who wants to speak, please use the raise the hand function on Zoom. Um, Madam Mayor, I have not received any written correspondences or text messages and I no longer see any more hands up.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item six, the consent calendar. Uh, Colleen, you wanted to remove something from the consent calendar? You're muted.
Apologies. I'd like to remove item H for discussion, please.
And I would like to remove item I for discussion.
Okay, so.
A motion to approve consent calendar items D through G.
I will second.
Local vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Lance.
Hi.
Councilmember Mackin.
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Hi.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Hi, thank you. Colleen, since you started, uh, item H conversation, discussion.
Question for a city engineer. Description under this, this is Visitation Avenue Convenience Power DPW 91 is the project number. It says this project involves redesigning the existing power system for the decorative Visitation Avenue streetlights from a streetlight franchise rate to a metered circuit. Last time we talked about this item, you had mentioned that the way PG&E historically set up billing for streetlights was a blanket charge. I may not be using the right terminology. Does this mean that with this project, those streetlights go on a metered circuit? Is Randy here?
I, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I, I hit the wrong button. That's exactly what that means. And it goes from being, instead of being billed as one street light equals one rate per month, all of those streetlights will now be on a metered rate.
And was there any investigation into doing any type of solar? I mean, I know everyone's going to hit you with solar everything, but just out of curiosity.
I understood that the assignment was to get one 10 volt AC convenience power at the streetlight poles so that evening decorative lights could be put up? So, no, we did not investigate solar because these lights would need to be on at night.
Okay. So, thank you, Randy. That, that answers my question. So here's where I'm coming from, why I pulled this. I heartily applaud anything in Brisbane that celebrates our community. Light those stars up on the hillsides during the holidays. But we are a sustainable city and I read the latest climate change report about how much we need to reduce our energy footprint. And I think good intentions with this. But do we really want to use more energy and power to illuminate something? And you may think I'm being extreme, but I'm starting reading about climate change to think that we need to start thinking extreme. I really do. If we could accomplish the same with solar or do it somewhere else, also this is $50,000 and it's not huge, but looking at all the capital improvement projects, I just, I look at other things and go, whoa, that $50,000 would be really great. And I honestly understand and I appreciate the exuberance behind this. But I'm also trying to be responsible and, and have us be sustainable on climate change because we keep saying we are. So I invite your discussion on this.
So, a- again, another question for Randy. The cost difference for having metered power on those poles instead of a flat rate per pole? Have we figured out what that may be in a difference?
No, ma'am. It'd be a guess at best. I mean, really the issue of more electricity is going to be come from how often and how much power we pull off the convenience receptacles.
Uh, Madam Mayor, can I ask, uh, maybe a question that may help clarify this? Randy, as I recall it, the city's, um, program through PCE, we're on the 100% renewable, uh, energy, um, plan.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, so the, the electricity, we would be using electricity and it would be coming through obviously the system, but it would be, you know, we, we do participate in the 100% renewable, so.
As, as, I'm, I'm sorry, as your PCE rep, I will tell you that it's 100% renewable, but when the sun goes down, we're using other sources because renewables sometimes aren't available.
Right. It, it, it's within their program and I, and I realize that, you know, it's not a, um, electron per electron, um, you know, equivalency. But we are, um, I think, you know, our investment is in, to do, on the renewable side in the portfolio. So, um, I mean, I think that does certainly show the city's, uh, intent in terms of, um, putting its, uh, its efforts and its money towards, um, this climate change, uh, issue. I know this issue has come up. Uh, I mean, I think I was probably, uh, the one who kind of asked the Public Works Department to put this together for a proposal on the capital program because, um, I've been working with a, a couple of council members over the last few years who were very interested in trying to, um, get a better look for our downtown during the holiday season. Uh, I think if you go to our neighboring city over in South San Francisco, they, they do, uh, quite a bit over there to, um, dress up Grand Avenue and to a very festive look. Um, and we've been a little bit short on that. So I think that was our, our goal, our intent and, um, in, you know, at least I do think, you know, we're making the effort on the energy part to offset, uh, any, uh, impact on additional, um, demand. Um, uh, notwithstanding your, your observation, which is, which is technically correct.
If I'm understanding it correctly, it'd be like a one month probably that any extra power would be used for. Cause the holiday season, you know, probably runs like, uh, a week or so into December, two or a week or so. Into the first week of first week, second week, maybe of December to second week of January, something like that. So I don't know how much additional, anything would, it, I, I think that in the discussions that we had in the past, it wouldn't be likely a decoration on every pole. It would probably be on the ones that are on the corners. Or it would be staggered, a little bit more staggered. So, because, you know, just to eliminate cost in, in, in that fashion, but also to have just something that's a little bit more festive during the holiday season. So that is a little bit more on the background, but it wouldn't be like, it wouldn't be energy that would be used additionally every single day. It would just be for a brief period of time.
And are these decorations to stay on all night?
We haven't looked at like specific decorations, so we have to be able to electrify or we have to be able to have that meter and change, make that change before we can move forward with anything. So we haven't advanced to that stage of like determining a decoration, but I think that, you know, we could probably have it so that they turn off at a certain hour, but that's not my area of expertise. So I would defer to staff.
Sorry, Terry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, um, what subcommittee was working on this?
Um, I, I would describe this as a city vangers ad hoc committee. Uh, I basically got approached by the mayor, current mayor and, um, and, uh, and Madison about this and we were working on this, um, last year. I think we actually had some discussions the year before also.
Yeah.
So that, that was the origin of it.
Karen and I decorated that we wanted to get something going for, um, this year and it was just not feasible in the timeframe. So Karen and I wrapped one of the trees in ribbon and then staff was able to wrap the rest of the trees in ribbon. But that again, like is a waste of materials every single year, all of that ribbon, which is going to go into landfill. And it's just a little bit hokey looking. But we did receive a lot of comments from, um, residents saying how much they appreciated us, you know, being a little bit more festive during the holiday season. But that was kind of our makeshift decor in the absence of being able to have something, you know, professional. So it'd be nice, you know, if another thing that we've kind of talked about over a long period of time, I know this came up probably 20 years ago through the Park and Recreation Commission, was doing hanging flower baskets. There's a lot of cities that do the hanging baskets and it's, I think Burlingame does it. And that also just makes a city just look a little bit more festive and aids to the, the vibe of the downtown. But then there's the issue of watering those and maintaining those, which again, you know, that takes resources too.
Uh, you know, if I may, uh, Madam Mayor, I, I think, uh, the suggestions that, that, that you and, and Councilmember Davis put forth are, are, are good ones. Uh, because, eh, ever since I've been on the council and really ever since I've been in town, you know, people have, uh, wished for a more vibrant, uh, downtown. And I think this suggestion is really good. I, I definitely hear where you're coming from, Colleen. I mean, we, we should be really looking at what is our carbon footprint? Um, and how do we reduce that? I, I don't see this really kind of putting us over the top in, in a, in a, in a real negative way. I mean, I see uh, us really tackling, uh, our responsibility to climate change at its zero point. You know, Crocker Park, the Baylands, um, making our, our downtown beautiful during the holidays, I think is an investment in, in bringing good feelings for the citizens of our community. And so I, I strongly support it. I, 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 I think it's, it's money well spent and, um, I, I would leave it as is.
Terry, you had a comment?
I, I have a question. Um, would, and I know that you haven't looked at actual lighting, but are we looking, I mean, I would hate to see overly bright that's going to interfere with the possible dark skies ordinance. And, you know, having that glow can be nice. I, I've seen patio tape lights, the hanging cafe lights that look pretty and, but I would want to make sure that they weren't on all the time and weren't. I know everything needs to be LED now, but some of the LED lights are blinding and we see that in some of our neighbors that have porch lights that are overkill. So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that the cost is going to be quite a bit more because we're going to metered power instead of, and whether we put extra lighting on the poles or not, I have a feeling that, you know, the power rate is going to be increased comparatively. But I understand there's, um, council members who are very passionate about this. So.
Okay, so I did some research on the lights when we started talking about this years ago. And yes, they're basically all LEDs. There are a huge amount of lights that are out there. Some of them are like little stars or little cherubs or, or whatever. But I, I agree that, you know, the amount of people who have asked for this over the years is not insignificant. And I think many of us have promised that we would look into it. Um, and LED is drawing a couple of watts of power. If we're going to be go, getting to the extreme, we need to look at every street light in our town and we need to look at every, every light that's out at, um, the Baylands right now. I mean, that's lit up like a Christmas tree the entire time. So if we're going to pick on, um, you know, reducing our footprint, that's the places we go. And, you know, making our, our residents happy for something they've been asking for, for years and years and years, I do support. I think, um, I think Randy, we probably should know a little bit more about what that power consumption really looks like. I think, I think Randy, we probably should know a little bit more about what that power consumption really looks like. PG&E is notorious to bait and switch, so can we do a little more research on the numbers on that?
Again, that, that, our, we get the power from PCE, so this is not a PG&E issue. So, I mean, I think what, as we move forward with implementation, certainly we'll take into consideration the overall project costs, work within the budget that is here, and also keep in mind the, the, the power demands on what we're, what we're doing. So, I think, I think we all hear that loud and clear.
Okay, so should we take a vote on item H?
Oh, I just wanted to say one last thing.
Okay.
I actually live my, very close to a streetlight on visitation, and it blinds me at night. My whole apartment is orange at night. So I'm somebody who's very, obviously very sensitive to this. This impacts me directly. And so, you know, from a personal standpoint, I would not be setting myself up for a significant additional, significant additional amount of light than what I already endure. So I think that likely, you know, Karen and I can work with staff, can work with parking rack to maybe identify some options and then bring those back so that you guys can weigh in on the design and the lighting style so that it ultimately isn't something that you feel is tacky or that is just going to be overwhelming. Because I think that we would want everyone to feel excited about whatever those decorations are that are implemented.
You, you know, even last year when we wrapped the poles and I made 79 bows, 79 bows that we then attached to the poles, the feedback we got was phenomenal from people, how, how it just cheered them up, it made them feel good. So, you know, that's what people have been looking for for quite a long time.
So could we look into a solar powered decorative light then, which I'd still be against because of dark sky? And I think that's something we need to think about. And I agree with Madison with those streetlights that are too bright. Maybe we should spend another 50,000 to deal with those streetlights as well. But I think that we've not really thoroughly vetted the possibilities here. So I cannot support this.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, do you have a quick question on a different matter on, in item H?
Sure.
And, and that, and I guess it's for Stuart. So there's the, the replacement of the boards at the community garden, which I totally support, definitely need to, to do that if they're starting to rot. But it just seemed like really expensive to, for $50,000 for those two by sixes for the 37 plots. Is, is, is lumber that costly just for the wood? That just seems really high.
What we say, Stu, from that one.
It's going to turn out for Randy.
Yeah, so it actually is, and, and those numbers are actual numbers. We went out and got a quote on it and lumber, if you've not been tracking it, I think.
I've been hearing it.
Yeah, the, the latest Instagram joke I saw on it was a gentleman who had a small wind splinter through his finger, and he says, "I'm going arrested for felony theft because I walked out of Lowe's with this in my hand." Lumber prices are triple what they have been. It, it's, it's incredible. We, we were saying out at, out at the lift station number four at Sierra Point, where the development out there was required to put a station in, we're seeing sheets of plywood four by eight going for $120.
Oh, my goodness.
I talked with Golden State Lumber yesterday, and they were saying that it was looking like 4X. The normal price is what they're seeing. And, and theft, attempted theft on their lumber is also, has also increased, but yeah, they, a representative from there, and we had a conversation yesterday, and she said it's more, it's closer to four times pre-pandemic costs.
Wow. Yeah, I've heard though that the cost of lumber is starting to go down a little bit, and that, that the, the cost will eventually start to normalize. Do, do we have to do the work kind of now, or can we wait a little bit and, and then maybe the cost will come down?
That, that isn't, that is not a project that you approved to do yet. That's just on the list of projects that we can do.
Yeah, but I thought tonight, that would be one that we would approve.
No, I, I, I don't think so, sir. I think what, tell me if I'm wrong, Stuart, but I think what, what you did last time was you brought the spreadsheet that showed all the projects that were recommended. But we had a series of projects who, that the project descriptions were missing, and you're providing all of those missing projects tonight, but not all of these are projects that the council approved.
Correct. Okay, I apologize then. Okay, so this is just to put it on the list. It doesn't mean that these items are going to get funded.
No, not these items, no.
Right, so, okay, I apologize, my mistake.
The projects 88, 89, and 91 are the ones that were, that you had approved at the last meeting. That's why I put them down as priority projects.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just a follow up on the concern on the cost of lumber. Just keep in mind, we have the largest lumber yard in the Bay Area.
Is that why there's so many bright lights out there? Terry, you had your handle.
Um, I was going to ask the same question that Cliff asked because the staff report was not clear about the lumber, the bed replacement didn't even have a project number. So I wasn't sure why that was even included, and I didn't remember seeing that as, as, you know, it has the file attachments. But it didn't really, and maybe I, because of the way the staff packet is front and back and doesn't really flow correctly when you're looking at it printed. So.
If you look at the front page of the staff report under background, I think that explains what, what this staff report is about.
So, so the only ones that we are being asked to approve are
77. And 91.
I'm sorry, you cut out there.
Sorry, 77, 87, and 91.
The ones that, the ones that the council approved at the last meeting were projects 88, 89, and 91. The other ones are just on there because we needed to include them in the packet, and that's what I meant by approve them to be in the, in the capital projects packet. But the council, the council identified projects 88, 89, and 91 as a priority projects for next year.
So with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve projects. I don't want to do item H, I just, because it's not really that clear. I'd say DPW 88, 89, and 91.
Just confirm, those are the ones you just mentioned, right, Stuart?
Correct.
Okay, second.
Well, could I, I'm, I'm so sorry to, to jump in, but could I note that I think we also wanted DPW 90 since that project has already been funded by the developer and was required for them to be performed as part of their MMRP?
Okay.
You want to amend that, Terry?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve projects DPW 88, 89, 90, and 91.
One second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Roll call, Doug, please, Amber.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Nay.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye.
Okay, let's, Terry, you wanted to pull item I. Would you like to?
I just, I just have a question on item I. So this is following the same language as the county ordinance?
That's my understanding. Tom, did you want to address that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman O'Connell, this tracks with the, the county ordinance. The other thing we should do, it's in the report, but I should note for the record that when this came up previously, we didn't have the background research on whether other cities had adopted the language, and they have. It's been in place for a number of years in a variety of cities in the Bay Area. So it tracks not just the county, it also actually tracks consistent with other local cities.
So basically, we're just mirroring that, Tom?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And when you say essentially, do you mean we are mirroring, mirroring it?
You're mirroring the substance of it, some of that, for visually being entered, but you're mirroring the substance, yes.
So you don't think changing any of the language puts it as any risk?
Any risk? No, I can't say that, but I can say that I believe the first time it was adopted in a substantially similar form was 2017, but there have been a number of adoptions since 2019 throughout the area. I'm going to say five to 10. Those are the same ordinance as this, and there has not been a lawsuit filed that we have found, and we also reached out to other municipalities to ask, and they're not aware of one. So the, the usual lawsuit to come with these things about a year out. We haven't seen them in two and a half years, so I think you're pretty low, low risk in adopting this ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to, to maybe, this would help Terry, clarification. When, when we had the ad hoc committee meeting, I did some research. The peninsula cities that have adopted are Belmont, Burlingame, Colma, Foster City, Hillsborough, Millbrae, Redwood City, San Bruno, San Carlos, and recently South San Francisco. And then also there's Berkeley, Sunnyvale, San Jose, San Francisco. It just goes on and on and on. Most cities have actually adopted it, and they did. Most cities pattern theirs right after what the county enacted.
Okay, do you have any further questions on that, Terry?
No, thank you.
Would somebody make, like to make a motion to approve item I? As stated.
Do we need, I guess we should, do we need public comment on this, since we removed it from consent?
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on this item?
Have received no text messages or written correspondence, and I see no hands up.
Thanks very much. Okay, I go back to, shall we have a a motion to approve item I as stated in the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Doug, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item seven, public hearing. Item J, to consider adoption of resolution number 2021-38, amending the master fee schedule adopted on June 4, 2020. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and council members. In June 2002, ordinance 468 was passed and stated the city council would have the opportunity to review and approve fees annually. Resolution 2021-38 represents the annual revision recommended by staff. The revision is based on a 2% inflation increase. As you recall, the city did not increase rates in 2020 due to COVID-19. So staff has reviewed the rates and has determined it's time to adjust the fee schedule in order to keep in line with the cost of providing services. The exception to the 2% increase was determined in some line items within planning, parks and recreation, and public works. For planning and public works, several rates tied to hourly wages had to be adjusted to correlate to current cost recovery. So it could have been either less or more than the 2%. For parks and recreation, the aquatic daily rate didn't change. Therefore, there was no reason to change the rate of monthly or 15-day punch passes other than to maintain the spreads between resident and non-resident rates. So tonight, council is being asked to adopt resolution 2021-38 to amend the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2122. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may. Carolina, could you answer? I, I looked at the fees. There was only one that I noted that actually went down, which was the gazebo rental, parks and rec fees. Can you tell me, was that supposed to be there? Was that a misprint?
No, those were looked at with park and rec. And there was just adjustments just to correlate to the, the, the cost.
Because it went down significantly, that's why I wondered.
I don't think we have park and recreation here tonight.
It was $209 it went per hour. It went down to $86 per hour.
Wow, that does, that does seem like.
And the gazebo, because it has electricity and it's kind of a prime attraction for weddings, parties as a center focal point. I just wondered why that, that is going down so low.
Okay, I can follow up for more details on the reason, but I know that all of the, the fees were reviewed with each department.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council?
Madam Mayor, I got a couple of questions. Thank you, Carolina. Let's see, so the, the general increase fee by 2%, so you know, just in the content calendar, we're talking about the high cost of lumber. Right, I mean, there's this, this increase in inflation. Of course, the, the Fed chief says, oh, don't worry about it, it's going to go back down. Right now, inflation is running at 5%. So, I, I mean, I, I know that we're doing this to, just so that we can keep up. When you were preparing this, and as inflation was, was rising, did it, did it make you think, oh, maybe we need to make some adjustments? And if, and if not, why?
Well, the allowed rate that is used is the rate through December 2020. So that was what we used, and it's a local rate for a consumer price index, less energy, which was the rate that was decided for the ordinance, do I understand? And so if there are any adjustments that we find either during the year or we could bring it back next year if we find that the cost is significantly higher than what we're proposing today.
Okay, no, that makes sense, because I, I think typically inflation has been fairly steady around the 2% mark for, for quite some time.
Correct.
Okay, and then, then the, the aquatic daily rate, so I was looking at the chart that you provided, and and so, you know, all the swimming lessons and private uses of the pool, those all went up. But then if you were, I guess, doing lap swimming or just daily use, tho, tho, those stayed the same, and I asked, I mean, costs have gone up. I'm surprised that, you know, that those rates didn't go up appropriately.
Well, if, because the rates, if, if you do apply the 2%, the increase is minimal, that it's not really increasing the dollar value. You know, like a full dollar, a full two, to, to raise that rate. And so that's why we're keeping it steady. Behind the scenes, you'll, you'll probably see the 2% eventually hit the next dollar up. And once that kicks in, then we can change the, the punch passes and the, the other rates that are related to it as well.
Okay, I know we don't have a park and rec person here, but you know, have those, those fees relatively stayed the same, and I know Stuart's there, and he's a swimmer, so you probably know better than anybody. I mean, have those rates kind of stayed the same over the last several years, or when's the last time?
So what we do, as Carolina said, is, you know, we look at it every year. We basically roll the inflation in every year. But when you're But when you're looking at a 2% increase on, you know, $10, you're talking about a 20 cent increase, it takes, you know, about three or four years before you're going to hit to the next level. And the reason why our punch passes and our monthly passes don't go up is because those are based on what the daily passes, what the daily rate is. It's a certain number of daily rates gets you to a punch pass and a certain number of daily rates to get you to the monthly. So those won't go up. Years ago, we used to increase the, the punch passes and the monthly passes without increasing the daily rate, because a daily rate wasn't going up fast enough. And the two became out of became disproportionate, and therefore we, about four years ago, brought them back in line. And we're just waiting for, you know, enough time to go by for the daily rate to, before we do increases for any of the swimmers.
Okay, so our rates are, you know, comparable to the other cities?
They are comparable, I, I think it, I think we might be a little bit on the low side, but people like it, people, you know, and, and it's interesting, because this, you know, during COVID, we were charging $10 per lane. And it was full.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Stuart.
And if I may interject, to answer Colleen's question regarding the gazebo, looking at my notes, the reason it went down for the non-resident rate is to maintain that spread between the resident versus non-resident rate. So that's, that's why you'll see such a drastic reduction.
Anybody who rented it at the higher rates is going to wonder why they got taken for a lot of money last year. Thank you.
Karen, you're muted. Some people prefer it that way. We'll now open the public hearing. Ingrid, do we have anybody who wishes to address, speak counsel in matter?
I have not received any text messages or written emails. And I don't see any members of the public wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you. Can I get a first and second to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Okay, council discussion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-38.
I will second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. Tom, do we need to read this resolution in the record?
No, you do not.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item eight, old business. Item K, consider approval of the implementation guidelines for public art ordinance with any changes approved by the city council. Staff report, please.
Yes, so back in 2014, the city council adopted an ordinance for public art in lieu of we get 1% on building. In 2016, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed and made changes to the guidelines, and the city council adopted those guidelines in 2017. The city recently went through a couple of processes with the public art guidelines, one was a private that never actually came to fruition, and then the other one was a public piece of art at the mural, mural at the skateboard site. Based on this experience, the public art committee met and discussed whether or not they thought that guidelines should be updated. The committee, when they met, decide, decided to request the city council review the guidelines and make changes based on the fact that the their recommendations would go to the Parks and Recreation Commission and not directly to the city council. The feeling from the committee was that they should be like other committees of the city council, since they're appointed by the city council, so that they would go directly to the city council. Also, the committee discussed, and the two members of the Parks and Recreation Commission who are on it both agreed that since the Parks and Recreation Commission were represented on the public art committee, then it would not need, it did not need to go back to the full Parks and Recreation Commission, they felt that there, the two members could adequately represent the public, the Parks and Recreation Commission. The other area that the, that was talked about at the public art committee was the idea of the, the public art selection committee, the public art selection committee is different from the public art committee, the public art committee is made up of two council members, two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and three members of the public, one of which needs to represent the, the business community, one of which needs to represent the residents, and one of which needs to represent the art community. The idea of the public art selection committee originally through the park, through the original guidelines, was that if there was going to be a project in a neighborhood, then there should be a representative from that neighborhood on the public art selection committee to talk about that. The public art committee said with three, with three residents or three people from the public representing the, on the original public art committee, that was enough representation, and if there was a desire to have more representation, they would request additional input from the public, similar to if open space and ecology was going to do something and ask for input from the public, or the complete streets was going to ask for input from the public. These meetings are held, are publicly held meetings. We have had visitors, we have had people from the public come into these meetings and make, make comments at the meetings. They have not in the past been televised, but obviously, if that's a desire of the city council and the public art committee, we can, you know, do that format, which is different from what we do now. Those are the major changes that are being asked for tonight by the public art committee. There are two members of the public art committee who are council members, and they might be able to speak better to, to this than I can. But if there are any questions, more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Stuart?
I have question, Madam Mayor. Stuart, does, is there an official charter for the public art committee as you have for other committees and commissions?
I, I think the guidelines are what would be considered the official charter for the public art committee.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it lays out the process for how public art is chosen, how much of the money can be used for public art, how much it can be used for maintenance, and how much it can be used for administrative costs. So it really lays out the process for the selection of public art done by the city, and also working with a private developer who wants to put public art on their site.
Hope you had a question for Stuart?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Stuart, you know, just, you know, trying to get some additional background, so the creating the public art ordinance, that was initiated by the Park and Rec Commission, there were some members that, that, that was one of their things that they wanted to advocate?
Correct, so originally, with the Parks and Recreation Commission looked at it and asked the city council if they could develop a public art ordinance. The city council said that they could, that there was a committee of three members of the public, of the Parks and Recreation Commission that reviewed a series of ordinances and developed the public art ordinance that we have in our city.
Okay, all right, so it, it was initiated by Park and Rec, it wasn't a council you know, uh, goal to, you know, have Park and Rec, hey, here's, here's an idea that we have, we want you to look at it, they, they, Park and Rec propositioned the council. Correct. Okay. And then, you know, I'm glad that you talked about, you know, having the meetings recorded or having it be televised. So right now, none of the meetings are televised, like the other committees or commissions?
No, and it's, it, you know, the committee is still fairly new, and a lot of our newer committees hadn't been televised originally. The meetings are usually held during the day as opposed to in the evening.
Okay, so there, so then, and then I'm, I'm just assuming that none of the meetings have been recorded, or, you know, detailed minutes have been taken?
No, and we keep a, we, Angel does keep a, a certain level of the minutes to record the discuss, you know, discord, to, to record the general discussion and the actions that are taken, but nothing that would be considered a detailed minute.
Okay, and then, you know, I'm just looking at the discussion page here, page number two. And in, in the first sentence, it says the, the public art committee stated that having work to be reviewed or approved by the Park and Rec Commission. And so I, I see this word approved, and it, it's really going to Park and Rec for, for, to provide a recommendation to the councils, not to approve the project, they don't have any, like, powers to say yes or no on a project, they just review it and give their opinion, correct?
Correct, I think the, you know, they have to try and put words in seven people's mouths. But I think the feeling of the public art committee was that by having it being reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and having that recommendation be made to the city council, they were feeling as if there was an approval process by Parks and Recreation, that if they didn't agree with it, then they would, there would be a negative recommendation to the, to the city council. I think it was more of a feeling of, of, of it being approved than an actual approval process itself.
Okay, but you know, you know, just kind of looking at the process, I'm not saying like, I agree with the current process as it stands today, but since there are no televised meetings, and, and, and a lot of these, these committee meetings are in the day, having it go through Park and Rec, or at least through that kind of avenue, provided additional public perspective and, and comment that normally, you know, might not happen like in a subcommittee, because we have subcommittee meetings, we might get some interested people, but for the most part, people don't show up usually because it's during the middle of the day.
I, I think that was the original intent of the guidelines, is to have more of a public process through the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I think the public art committee, you know, again, not trying to speak for seven people, but if that's the feeling of the city council, that they would like more of a public process, then the public art committee would create a more, would could create that process without going through the Parks and Recreation Commission. The public art committee, you know, their feeling, and again, trying to not speak for seven people, was that this is the only committee that is appointed by the city council that gets reviewed by another committee appointed by city council.
Yeah, but we, we also know that the, the structure of this committee is a lot different than other committees and commissions too. So it's kind of, it's like its own animal, right? So, and then, you know, just in regards to you know, the, the, the public art piece, right, that was supposed to be at the skate park, so I mean, it, it just seems so odd, you know, here's, you know, the public art subcommittee or committee is, you know, they, they all come in agreement, right, so but then the Park and Rec Commission voted it down, so there just seems to be like some kind of disconnect, and probably Karen and Madison, and I know Stuart, you're there too, you know, provides some kind of insight to that, because it just seems really odd, you know, for that, that to kind of occur, and so I'm just curious to know, was the, did, did, did the committee approve the artist? And then the art was then created that then got, you know, so not recommended for moving forward from the front?
So the, I'm sorry, Karen, I'm sorry, Mayor, you?
Well, you know, you can give a brief, but we, I'm sure Madison and I would like to be able to answer your question on this too. Sorry, Stuart, go ahead.
Okay, I, what happened was that the public art committee, selection committee chose the artist. The, that contract went to the city council. The city council approved that contract, because it went through the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it went through the city council. Then the public selection, art selection committee worked with the artist to develop a mural. There was a seven, there was a 9-0 vote to approve the mural at that point in time.
The way that it looked, okay.
The way that it looked, there was, there was no dissent within the public art selection committee, which included two members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think one of the things that may have happened between the time that the artwork was done, was, was recommended to the commission, and the time it went to the commission, George Floyd died. And I think that raised a question within at least one of the Parks and Recreation Commissioners, whether or not the mural was representative of who we wanted to be post BLM movement. But in addition to that, there were a number of other items that the Parks and Recreation Commission looked at, and said they did not believe that the mural fit what they were believing. And the mural met the requirement of what was being asked of the artist. And the RFP that went out was approved, was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and reviewed by the city council before we, we, we sent it out. And I think what happened was that the Parks and Recreation Commission felt that the mural was no longer relevant for what they wanted, even though two of the members who were on the commission voted in favor of the, that piece of work, I think, two weeks before it went to the commission.
There was another aspect to this that's important to note, is that there was not agreement on the artist from the very beginning. That is why, that is why this, I believe that this situation occurred. Four people wanted one artist, one person wanted another artist, and four people wanted the third artist. So nobody was, it, there was a split, it was a split vote when we did the interviews. So what happened is that, like, everyone just compromised basically, and went with their second choice artist, because we all had the same second choice artists, and only one person got their first choice, and eight people got their second choice. And so I think the problem is that at that point, when there was, we, we, clearly there was no consensus that we should have just gone back to the drawing board at that point, and should have just either refined the RFP, or we should have maybe reevaluated the budget, or we should have just, you know, gone out to bid again. But I think that what happened is that, because this is, was the first time we had ever moved through this, everyone's kind of has, had sea legs, right? So we don't know, we're just trying to figure it out. And we just decided to compromise with an artist that nobody really loved. And so we, we pushed forward, and then we got a piece from the artist, and then we struggled with that, with that piece. I think that we didn't feel like it was very representative, but at the same time, we were really cautious of trying to tell the artist exactly what to paint or to critique, you know, the piece they had created, because we also want to respect their process and respect their art. And so we tried to make like minor tweaks that we thought would help. And we did that over and over again, and I think in reality, the problem was is that none of us really loved the piece from the beginning, and all this, all the steps that were made, or because we were just trying to like do our job and move forward with this, and so I actually think it might be beneficial to consider something in the framework that talks about what, what, in the event that there is no consensus after the RFP has gone out and all of the, you know, applicants have been reviewed, what to do in that instance, because I think that if that issue was taken care of in the beginning, we wouldn't be here right now. So, you know, it was kind of, it was a struggle from the very beginning, and I think it's just that we just didn't select the right artist.
Okay, all right, so, and, 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 and Karen, you have.
So and, and I'll, I'll just stay strictly business on this, I think the way the ordinance was written is fatally flawed. I mean, we do not have any other committee that, so if we got planning issues, subcommittee, it doesn't go back to the planning commission for approval or recommendation to the city council, it comes directly back to the city council. And I think having that extra piece in there, it's not like we want to take the Park and Rec Commissioners who are appointed to this committee out of the game. There's still 100% in the game just as we are. But that extra step was just very confusing. As especially when you think that both of the Park and Rec Commissioners, one of them it was their first choice and the other was they both voted in favor of approving the piece of art and then they took it back to Park and Rec and so they didn't like it anymore two weeks later. So we, you know, this was how many months of staff time, council time, people's time, money was wasted based on the fact that I think we had a faulty ordinance.
The other thing is that, like, you know, you have your you have you appoint your your Public Art Committee and you have members of the public who serve, you have members of Park and Rec, you have members of city council. They all represent the community in a different way. And they worked on this and we have like art professionals, right, that are part of the committee. And I, you know, felt like we worked on this for something like eight months and I could be wrong, but it was a significant period of time. And so to have all that work and all the discussion and like interacting with the artist and, you know, him going and talking to community members and that entire process. We intimately know the art and what went on to arrive at the final piece. And then it goes to a body that hasn't, you know, for review that hasn't been a part of any of that process. But you would assume that they would have some inclination of what went on because there were the representatives. And their voices and their thoughts are represented through that way. So I think it's what's a challenge is that like this one body works on it for such a significant period of time and then a body who hasn't touched it all looks at it over the course of 20 minutes. And I think that, you know, if we had had a good process from the start where there was a provision in there of what to do, should there have been like major dissension in that way? We probably would have had a piece that everyone could have got behind when it went to that step. But unfortunately, it didn't. And so I think it's also was a challenge between the committee and the artist because we wanted to make a decision on the artist and say, yes, you're we're go. We we want to move forward with you, but then it would have to go to Park and Rec for the approval and then it would have to go to council for the approval. And it just felt like the steps were delayed such a long period of time because we were waiting for all these levels of approvals before we could move forward with what we needed to do as the committee. It seemed moving through all those levels of approval was a little bit arduous and delayed like our ability to get to work.
Okay, no, no, thank thank you for that. I I'm just kind of curious why why after the recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission, it didn't, we didn't, you know, view it ourselves and.
Right, well, the only the only comment that was ever given to me by one of the members of Park and Rec was simply put, I changed my mind.
Yeah.
That's it. That's all I got.
But I mean, we could have, we could have proved it. I mean, we could have reviewed it as a council and said, okay, thank you for your rec, thank you for your recommendation, Park and Rec Commission, but we like this piece. Let's 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 go with it.
The two council members, the two council members that were on it realized that again, like the piece was flawed from the beginning. We were just trying to move through the process according to the existing guidelines. And Karen and I were in love with the piece. So I think that also puts the council in a very awkward position to be having one committee say, here's the piece that we are we are submitting to you for and then we've worked on this and then have another commission say, we hate this piece. And so it's almost I think it puts the council in this like really awkward position to choose between your two children almost. Like which which child are you going to side with today? And I think that Karen and I recognized that, hey, this is an opportunity to like go back and there were clearly issues with the process. And this is a time, this is a learning lesson to be able to go back to the drawing board and tweak some things and also realize, okay, you know, we need to, we need to connect with and find a better artist. And so I just think that it wouldn't have been it just wouldn't have made sense to come forward that way and and be in that.
All right, now that 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 seems.
You know, and if you think about potentially what what kind of projects are going to come before us art wise in the future? We've got to get this right now. We've we've got to get this really tightened up. So when we're talking about a multimillion dollar piece of artwork, we're not going to have this kind of issue, right? That we're going to be rock solid and okay, you know, do we do we have you know, an arts professional who works in public art on the team or on call or something like that? So, you know, making a mistake at this level and have, you know, finding out there was a fatal flaw in the process is probably a good thing. Very frustrating for us for sure, but at least it wasn't a multimillion dollar piece of artwork.
That was something else we discussed, like Beth Grossman is a new member of the committee and she's an art professional herself. And she said, you know, I really think that it's wise to to bring on an art professional, especially as we move forward into the Baylands and that that's, you know, so many different art pieces. Or if we're looking at Crocker Park or anything like that, it's important to have, you know, someone on board that can help us craft an RFP in the right way and can help us navigate through this process a little bit easier. So I think that, you know, that would also help us. There was a lot that we learned and I think just going forward, we're trying to figure out how why those mistakes were made and how we can fix them.
And and besides that, artwork is so objective. So it's going to be the five of us looking at a piece of art and we're all going to have a very, very different reaction to it. And that is what art is all about. But this wasn't about a piece of art that nobody could make a decision on. This was a nine zero yes that got thrown under the bus. So we just can't afford to do that again. We definitely can't. And, you know, all of us learning, you know, you know, I you can walk by a piece of art in the city. I've always loved the hearts. A lot of people hate them. A lot of people, you know, hate the arrow and and whatever. Other people love it. I mean, you know, artwork is very personal. So we're never gonna make everybody happy. That wasn't the point. It was a process that blew up.
And that's also why that's also why we discussed in this, we all discussed as a committee. And one of the things about having two community members added for every project now makes your committee nine people. So it's just like Karen said, because so many people have different personal tastes, it becomes that much harder to like reach some level of consensus. And something a comment that was made by one of the other committee members was that, hey, Brisbane's like a relatively small town and we all feel rather connected and it doesn't feel like necessarily we live in super distinct neighborhoods. Maybe the Baylands would be distinct neighborhood in the ridge sort of would be more of a distinct neighborhood, but that it would be we could identify times in which, hey, maybe we don't have anyone from that particular neighborhood represented. We would want to bring somebody in on that project. But not necessarily, it may not be necessary for every single project to add another two people and then to go through the council interviews to appoint those two people to be on that, to be on that process, project. One thing that Kevin Friar was mentioning as one of the reasons that that was in it is he was referencing this piece in Visitation Valley and it was kind of an industrial art piece. I think it was made with parking meters or like something of that sort. And the people who decided on that piece didn't live in that neighborhood. And so when they installed that piece, it was not well received because the people in that neighborhood had no connection and didn't feel like it represented them. And so the thought of putting two extra people for every project so that we could ensure that that neighborhood vibe or feel was communicated was kind of taking that experience that happened happened in San Francisco and trying to apply that here to ensure that we wouldn't have a situation like that. But because Brisbane is so small, I don't see that being as much of an issue. But like I said, if we have a piece that's, you know, at the ridge or we have a piece that's at the Baylands and no one, we don't feel like those groups are represented on the committee, then the committee is always open to pulling in other members of the community or having workshops or having additional layer of public outreach. But we just wanted more flexibility about how we could go about doing that.
All right, yeah, I have comments, but I'll wait until after the public and another question.
Colleen.
Yes, just listening to what you said, Madam Mayor and Madison as well. I I'd just like to make a suggestion that these guidelines are not complete yet and that there be if there are no longer going to be a subcommittee of Parks and Rec, that there be a formal charter written, which would include guidelines. And instead of bringing in members of the public for different neighborhood installations, if in fact this committee met like every other committee in the evening hours when the public can come access the meeting, if something was going up in a certain neighborhood, those people could come and and you would have the benefit of their input. And to me, that's the concern is that these decisions on this committee not just be behind a closed door with a a small group of people because you might all agree, just like what you had Madison described on that project that everyone compromised. And if the public saw it, they may go, oh, I hate it. And you need to hear that. So if you in fact had a charter that delineated how to break the ties or what if it's an impasse, what to do about that, but also had those public meetings, I'd like to see a charter written for this committee.
Colleen, we will be having Park and Rec, two members of Park and Rec on this committee.
Yes, I yes, I understand that. I think that's good. Yes, I do understand.
Yeah, then nobody's being removed.
And the project will still come before the council. So there's still that layer of, you know, publicized in-person meetings. We did have members of the public show up to our meetings and write to us. I'm just curious from if if Stuart knows when this came to Park and Rec, it came at one meeting. I watched that meeting. I believe there was one public comment, which was as the same individual that came to our meeting in person. So I'm just curious. Do you have, I could be wrong, though. Do you have any sense of how many members of the public actually gave a comment when it was in this more public, more televised forum?
I think I think you're correct. I think we had one comment from the public. And and remember, the artists, I think, spent three or four days at the skateboard park, different times of the day, different times, different days of the week to get an impression from the public as to what the public wanted to see at that at in the mural and specifically met with the skaters. And I would say that the skaters had a similar opinion from the public, which was, you know, they wanted the mural to reflect the town as a whole, not just the skateboard park. And I think what the Parks and Recreation Commission was concerned about was that the mural reflected the town as a whole and not a a Parks and Recreation facility. And I think that's what the that's what the Parks and Recreation Commission would rather have seen was that something that reflected the facility, not the town as a whole.
Karen.
I I have opinions, but I think that we did have some correspondence and we may have some members of the public.
Sure. Are we finished making comments? So we can look for public comment now?
I don't have any questions, but I wouldn't mind commenting once we hear from the public.
I'm in the same boat.
So let's let's hear from if there's anyone from the public who wants to speak and then we can comment.
I'll go ahead and just read some of the correspondences that we received and they requested especially to read it during the meeting. This is from Kevin Friar to the Honorable Brisbane City Council. We have a public arts policy due in part to my vision and my initiative. Many folks in the Parks and Rec Commission deserve credit as we worked tirelessly over the last decade to bring this to fruition. Our hope was and still is that public art will be a lasting legacy far from our generation of community leaders. The Public Arts Ordinance was passed October of 2014 and by now there must be around a million dollars in the fund. However, getting accurate figures from the city has always been a challenge. This first million is only the beginning as we anticipate the Public Arts Ordinance will generate tens of millions for public art installations. The amount generated by the Baylands alone is thought to be in excess of $50 million. With thoughtful stewardship, iconic public art has the power to speak to who we are and bind us together as a community. I have read the proposed changes to the Public Arts Implementation Guidelines and I have grave concerns as one of the principal architects of the guidelines, we expected it would be modified as commissions, committees and council gained experience with the process. The two years we spent developing these guidelines, two key questions have remained at the front of our thinking. How do you how do we provide ample opportunity for public input? How do we safeguard against mediocre or bad art? To address these issues, we included two opportunities for the public at large to participate. The first would be at the meeting with Park and Rec discussed and and approve or reject the proposal. And the second opportunity, the city council meeting, where it again be discussed and final approval or rejection voted on. We also added two community members at large into the process of selecting artists to expand participation at the community level. Our first test of the guidelines came with the skate park murals proposal. With a fresh eyes, the Parks and Rec Commission viewed it as not particularly bad, but not particularly good. So in commission put it a nice billboard, but not really public art. We rejected it with a clear understanding as per the guidelines that would then go to council to discuss and either agree or overrule us. The guidelines worked. Well-meaning but inexperienced Public Arts Committee passed to the Parks and Rec Commission a proposal that excited no one. The Parks and Rec Commission, acting as a sticker breaker, voted to reject it. Now the council and community would have a discussion about the proposal and decide what to do. Except that didn't happen. The council removed it from the agenda and in spite of numerous inquiries from the Parks and Rec Commission as to what was next, we never got an answer. The guidelines failed in the first try. In removing the Parks and Rec for the process of proving public art, we remove that part that worked. In removing the two additional community members from the process in addition to removing Parks and Rec, we remove critical opportunities for public input. The Public Arts Committee meetings are not recorded nor are nor are records kept of the proceedings. While technically an open meeting, it is de facto operating out of the public eye. Transparency is the cornerstone of good government and these proposed changes clearly take us in the wrong direction. Secondly, dear members of the Brisbane City Council, I am Renee Marmian, a Park and Recreation Commissioner. I address you tonight on the subject put before you under old business item K updates of public art implementation. I am very frustrated, angry and disillusioned by what I see as another Park and Rec activity being hijacked away from us. The Public Art Ordinance was the brainchild idea that was developed for the Park and Rec Commission. The Park and Rec Commissioners who were diligently were instrumental in the architecture of this ordinance and brought it to the full body of the commission for further input to these very to these very guidelines that you now want to take away from us. Why would you want to do that? Why have a commission at all if you're frequently remove us from the equation? The guidelines follow a so to speak check and balance of what the procedure is about and the Park and Rec provides that hearing with a public viewing. Public art is in our public spaces, our parks, our facilities. It enhances our activities and this is clearly what Park and Rec is about. Our quadrille park is going to have public art on it and you want to take this away from us? Please reconsider this decision and value commissioners and this commission to do the job that you appointed us to carry out. Our ideas only will continue to make Brisbane healthy physically and mentally. Keep us in the loop, keep us in the recommendation advisory branch that we are with this public art ordinance. I thank you, Commissioner Renee Marmian. And then we also have two raise hands, Madam Mayor. We have Michael Barnes and Kim Fillion.
Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. I was involved in the the development of the arts guidelines. Several years ago, I attended a number of meetings and made some recommendations. And I thought the guidelines were actually.
Michael, your mic is going in and out.
All right. So I was in involved in the development of the Public Art Guidelines. Several years ago, I attended those meetings. And then when the city decided to make the skate park the site of the first public art, I was engaged again because I was part of the movement that actually got the skate park developed. engaged again because I was part of the movement that actually got the skate park developed. I found that the the process had many problems, as you've heard this evening. But I think overall, the process worked. One of the things I noticed was that the arts commissioners were intimidated by city council members in the room. I think that that led to some some silence from these representatives of the community because they realized the city council members had the last word and had the power. If you're going to make changes to how the public art process works, I'd recommend maybe renaming the Park and Rec Commission to the Arts Park and Recreation Commission and let them do all of the work and then make a recommendation to city council for final approval or rejection of public art. The current recommendations before you this evening seem to reduce civic engagement in the public art process. And that concerns me because with less civic engagement, you have less diversity of views. You don't hear the different viewpoints and you lose some of the value of the public art. I'd also like to point out that by saying that the two Park and Rec Commissioners that are on the Arts Commission represent the Park and Rec Commission is flawed because in the skate park mural process, when those two Park Commissioners brought the proposal to their commission, their commission disagreed with them and rejected the proposal. So I think that there's a, there's good value in having a body like the Park and Rec Commission review the art proposal. I, again, I think the process worked. I don't think it um, it was pretty at at every step, but I was engaged. I'm a member of the public. I've made lots of comments on it. And I actually even dragged skaters into the conversation about the mural at the skate park. I brought one to a subcommittee meeting or an arts committee meeting. And his only comment at that meeting was, I don't see any skaters in this mural. So I think that more civic involvement, more engagement with the community and not less will lead to a better outcome. Um, I agree that an art professional to guide the process is an excellent idea. Uh, but again, I believe that removing the public from the Public Art Committee will lead to less diverse views. And finally, another rationale for keeping the pu- the Park and Rec Commission or the Arts Park and Recreation Commission engaged in this process is that much of our public art may wind up in our parks and our civic structures. And I think that the skate park is a great example of that. The skate park is a is a park as well as an activity center, and it's overseen by the Park and Rec Commission. I think that's a a great place for the Arts Committee work to be reviewed before it goes on to the city council. Thank you.
Um, hi, um, Madam Mayor and uh, City Council Members. There, I'm back. Muted me again. I just feel like we're um, not having a very honest conversation about what happened. And I would just encourage um, the council members that were not part of this process to go back, and I'm happy to send the link to um, Kevin Fryer's testimony at the Park and Rec um, Commission meeting where this mural was voted down. Um, the comments from the Park and Rec Commission were very thoughtful. It was not, they didn't just look at it for twenty minutes. And I I think comments like that are very disrespectful to the Park and Rec Commission, which actually, if you, if you listen to the the meeting, um, I think you'd find that their comments were thoughtful and they were critiquing it against the public art guidelines that they were given. I think um, there was a clear prejudice against including uh, skaters on this mural from the start. Um, and that's also in Kevin's testimony, and that came from a council member. So I do agree that with with Michael and and others, that maybe the committee felt bullied um, because they don't have the power. They, they're serving at the pleasure of the council. And by having that prejudice against skaters from the get-go, kind of hamstrung the artist. Um, I I know we've heard several times uh, being brought up while the skaters, you know, were um, you know, interviewed. Um, I would, I would encourage you to go ask uh, the artist what questions he asked. So one of those questions um, was what is the value of an idea? Um, they weren't asked about skating. So, so I think I I think that was possibly intentional um, to satisfy a certain council member's desire not to have skaters on that mural. And, you know, it gives me no pleasure to testify um, in this way. I, it it's not fun, but I really feel that it it corrupted the process and it created a very toxic environment um, for that committee. And I would also agree that I think having the Park and Rec um, weigh in, they they weren't biased, and it took away that bias, and they were able to look at it without knowing what went on in the background and just you know, comment and critique it based on the merits against the public art guidelines. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Ingrid, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
I know, I see no additional hands up. And have not received any additional text or written correspondence.
Okay, great. Then uh, council discussion. Carrie?
So I I just I just want to say that um, coming, having a public arts ordinance um, of any kind is very progressive. We knew when we, when it was written and we did discussion that art is subjective and objective and that everyone looks at it a little differently. I sort of um, am confused by why a Park and Rec Commissioner would think we're taking away another duty from them by not having them involved in the public art um, selection process in this way. It's certainly a council's pleasure to assign or not assign duties to different commissions um, and committees. And many times a committee or a commission will bring an idea and ask if the council has an appetite for it, and they may get a yes or they may get a no. Um, and that's not belittling them or reducing their worth. It's that it may not be something that the council wants to see um, at this time. Um, so I do believe that having it go back to Park and Rec is a redundancy that doesn't need to happen, that as long as we can make the meetings more accessible and inclusive um, by having them televised or at night. And the people that want to participate will be able to participate. And I think that having a a very diverse group of people looking at it um, like we have looked at by, you know, the parameters of who will be on this committee, I think is good. So I'll leave my comments at that for the moment. Um, it is a team effort to get anything done, and particularly with art. Um, and you could ask everybody and get a different answer on what is art to them, or what they'd want hanging in their home or outside their home. So often we, if it's art in a particular spot, people will look at it differently than it's art that's going in some unknown spot. Just like a picture that you're gonna hang over your mantle and look at every day may be different than the one you put in a bedroom, because you're not looking at it at the same way in the same area. So I understand there was discussion about it should be skate or Park and Rec type of art, and that may not always be the same goal as what public art should be in a particular location. So that's my comments for the moment.
Colleen, do you want to go next? You're muted, Colleen.
Sorry, I did it again. I I'm just curious, since it was brought up that two council members on this committee intimidated people on the committee. How did it happen that we have two council members on the committee? I mean, is that just because it was on the original guidelines? Because then it seems also when it comes to the council, there's two votes automatically. And maybe we should think about whether this committee should just be a committee without the council. And and I'm not saying that's good or bad. I don't know. I would just like more feedback because that was brought up.
I think council members were on it because of the expenditure. Um, and also because um, I think it was, it was mainly because it's, you know, decisions around rather large expenditures of money. I think that um, one of the things that did come up in the process, particularly with this location, is that you know, from a council perspective, um, my perspective, and I think also Karen's, and I, and this was shared, you know, with many other um, committee members who are on, not just me. But um, we'll kind of envision this more as like an entry piece to town. That's something that appeals to the broad community versus a mural that is specifically about the skate park because you can't actually see it when you're inside the skate park. Faces the community park, and it faces that, you know, when you're driving into town, you're coming around by the signboard. It's more that entry piece. So um, there was somewhat of that input, but you know, Karen and I still have the same weight as everyone else. And um, you know, Karen and I both wanted the same artist um, that we ended up not going with, right? Because there was a compromise. And when it got to the council level to, you know, um, to hire that artist, Karen and I could have said, if we wanted to just have our way. We could have said at that point, actually, I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna change my vote, just like what happened at Park and Rec. We could have said, oh, actually, we're gonna change our vote. We're not gonna vote for the compromised artist. We're gonna actually just vote for the artist we want because we think that that's best. But in the vein of teamwork and in the vein of uplifting what the commission had, the committee had decided, the committee had decided to go with an artist that I wasn't too pleased about. But I'm not gonna go against the committee, right? Because we are one body working together. So Karen and I could have done that, or I could have done it, Karen could have done that. But we didn't, you, we didn't push through with like council authority to say, this is how it's gonna be. I'm gonna get the artist I want at the end of the day because I have the authority to make that happen or to try to sway the rest of the group. We simply, you know, when it came time, we upheld what our, our um, you know, teammates and our, the rest of our body had, what their wishes were.
And I can assure you, there wasn't one person on that committee who felt intimidated. And that, that comment was made by somebody who did not attend any of the meetings, by the way.
Uh, and to give you a little bit of history, so prior to these guidelines, the, we do have a piece of public art that we are going to hopefully be installing in the library over Labor Day weekend. We find, we're, we've almost got that finalized. And that was done by two Parks and Recreation Commissioners and two city council members. So I think when these guidelines were being written, their idea was is how do we add more people to represent the community to that core group. And I think that's the reason why we have the two commissioners and the two Parks and Recreation, the two Parks and Recreation Commissioners and the two city council members, because that was the committee that developed, that did the first couple of pieces of art within the city. And it was just a matter, how do we add to that to get more of a community representation?
Thank you for that perspective, Stuart.
I'm sorry, what was?
At the bit, I can see it.
I didn't know you could read my body language that well. I'm, I, I, I'm, I give it away that easily.
I'll try not to intimidate you, okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Go right ahead.
Alright, um, first of all, I got, I got a question now. And 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 so, uh, Stuart, you know, in regards to the the financials, how much do we have um, uh, in the fund?
Uh, we have a little bit over a million dollars. I don't know exactly what it is off the top of my head. I'd have to look in the financial system.
Alright, and then um, have you ever provided like a written financial report to the committee? Of like how much money's in there and?
I I I did when we first met before, prior to the approval of the Skateboard Park mural, and I gave it to the city council uh, as part of the staff report, is to say, here's how much we have available in the fund. Here's what we've already committed for the uh, re- restoration of the mural at Midtown. And here's what we're committing for this project. And here's what would be left after those two commitments.
Right.
Where I think it also said where, like where all the money came from. I think it also said like, this amount in the fund is from this project.
If I remember correctly, I I did all that. I think there may have been a little bit that I could not identify directly at that point in time. Because it was uh, on the old financial system that we didn't, we don't, we don't have that kind of backup for.
Alright, tha- thank you for that. You know, it's great to get that uh, clarification out there.
Something, Cliff, just before you go on there, you know, the, the whole funding thing is really important to all of us, but I would hate to see us waste one more penny. You know, we, whatever decisions that we all make, we've really got to keep in mind that we're spending other people's money that's being given, or not given to us, that that we are in charge of doing the right thing with. So I'm very upset about this from that perspective.
That money that we can't get back on this process, on this artist and his design already.
And can I ask you a question? How much did this debacle cost us?
I am thinking we paid ten thousand dollars for the design, and we would have paid fifteen thousand dollars for the completion. Since we didn't complete it, we don't, we, we don't need to make that payment.
Thank you.
And I think, I think I've got that split right. I'm not, I'd have to go back and look at the contract, but it's in that neighborhood.
And Stuart, how much time? Because the, I I think the, the time commitment is actually a lot more money if you want to think about it that way as well.
Um, my kids were still in high school at the time. No, I'm only kidding. Um, I think we probably spent a little over a year, um, because remember, this, this was finished post-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
No, we, we finished it post-COVID. We started it well before COVID. Because we finished it, I think, I think we, I remember when I went to the Parks and Recreation Commission with the final project, we did that over Zoom. Um, because we were, we were already in COVID at the time we went to the Parks and Recreation Commission. But I think we start, I I'd have to go back and look when we signed the contract, but it was probably, we've been probably at this now for over two, for about two years, is my guess.
So, so one question I have for the for the two members of the set, of the committee. Are there, is there any of the language in this that you would, that would want to see changed from this new update?
I think it might be helpful to put a provision in there about what to do if you can't come to a consensus. Because again, like that's where the problem started was at the very beginning. And it's had this amazing like trickle-down effect of like growing because of this rather small issue that if there were guidelines on how to address it, we, I don't think we would be here, but my suggestion would be, for example, if there's not a majority appro- approval on the Approve, approval on the artist. That either they, we need to go back and do another RFP. We need to maybe in, look at increasing the budget to get a better, you know, someone better that we like. Um, or, you know, we need to go back to the drawing board in some way or revise, you know, revise the RFP so that we can get. Maybe something that's a little bit more focused. Um, I think it would be wise to have some guidelines in there and what to do in this type of scenario, especially because we found that. We all have so many different opinions about what we like and. People were not shy about stating what they liked and did not like. I mean, we had very like interesting, robust conversations with nine people. Um, that ultimately came down to a vote. So I, I think that that is wise. To have something in there that, that guides through this type of scenario.
I, I totally agree with Madison and want to add just one more thing, Terry, that. Um, I agree. If we could get these meetings recorded. That takes um. Any of the comments that were not true from a couple of the people who made comments and puts them in public. Because the um, the artist. Definitely asked a lot of questions and gave us a lot of feedback on the questions he asked the skaters. And we were actually kind of surprised. At some of the answers we got from young people who were skating. They're like, it's not just about us. This is about everybody. And a skater was included in the artwork. Um, it's just that, you know, certain people wanted it to be all about skaters. And nothing else. And, and that's where they want to, you know, stay right there. And that's fine, because. Art's an opinion and that's the way it is. But I think if we can get these meetings recorded, we're not gonna have. Some misinformation brought to the city council over again.
All right, so um.
Oh, there was a skater also that was part of our committee. I think that's important to note. He grew up in Brisbane, used the skate park quite often. Um, you know, we had, I think, three people that the council interviewed for two positions. He was one of the ones that was selected. And he ended up going away to college and like joined us through Zoom for about a year. And I thought he brought like such a really great, interesting perspective, very engaged. Very opinionated. Um, so we did have a young person who had used the facility regularly. Um, even though he had, we didn't finish it in the time we thought. He was partici- he participated as one of us, as one of the committee members during that.
All right, so um, i- if I, if I can continue. So. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I have the same mind. Stream that you do, Colleen. Um, you know, for me, you know, kind of looking at this process of what went down. You know, I mean, I. In some ways, I, I, I. It, you know, definitely it's unfortunate, but it's not what's like. Motivating me. You know, i- it's making me think of like, just what is the process? You know, how do we, how do we structure our commissions and committees? And um, you know, when I look at like what's going on right now. It's, it is, it's messed up. I'm just gonna say it. It's like it's got one foot in like a subcommittee world. And then it's got the other foot in a commission committee world. And um, you know, back in the day. You know, I used to be on OSEC. You're probably saying, wait, wait a minute, Cliff. No, no, you were on OSEC, you were on planning commission. And then you went on the council. But back in the day. OSEC had two council members. And one planning commissioner, and I was the planning commissioner representative. And I, it was like this, it was, it was not very functional. And um. But the council, you know, even though that was Clark Conway's baby and he wasn't on the, 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 um. On the committee then, two other council members were. But that council, you know, decided, you know. We really should trust. These, these public members to be their own committee, to not have. Someone from the planning commission and not have two council members. And be like the other. Committees and commissions. And you know, one of the things that you guys brought up, which I think is, I, I totally, totally support. Is having an expert, right? Having a professional. To help guide you. Because, you know, public art is, is personal. Right? And, and people get really passionate about it, but you have third party on the outside. To help steer you along, you know, build that consensus. Maybe you won't always, you know, get the nine oh vote or whatever that then actually, you know, happens, but. What it does is that it, that, that person can help. With the process. And, and you know, when you look at, at OSEC. When they were formed. The city council decided, yeah, you're gonna have your own. Person to help you with your meetings. And granted, it was a part-time person. And then they hired another person. And then I, I believe later on, you know, Adrian became our sustainability person and then. That was part of her duties, but there was a person who was just dedicated. To OSEC. And you know, when that change happened. Then that committee flourished. And, and I could see the same thing happening here. And, you know. Being a parent. You, you know, you raise your kids and, and you help them along, but eventually. You gotta let them have their, their own thing. You gotta empower them. And so what, what I'm asking here of, of our council is. Let's, let's not have two Park and Rec Commissioners on this body. And let's not have two council members on this body. Let's have it be a public process, public members and create, you know, the, the, the committee like. Uh, complete streets and safety.
Oh, okay.
OSEC, right? So.
Cliff, can I, can I really stop you on this?
Uh, no, because you shouldn't. You should let me finish. And then, and then, and then we can, because we're supposed to have a discussion, right? And so, I mean, that's, that's part of the, the public process and, you know, when. When people make comments. You know, whether they're true or not, they're making these comments. Right? And, and we have to acknowledge that. We can't just say, oh, well, you know what? That, that didn't happen, or you, 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 you misinterpreted what I said or whatever. I mean, it's. You, you know, it. They made those comments. And so we should. Um, you know, be respectful of that. And just like. The, the Park and Rec Commission, even though. I don't think it should go to Park and Rec anymore. I don't, I think it should be. They should do their own thing. I want to say that the comments that they did make. They were really thoughtful, right? And, 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 and we should acknowledge that. You, you know, yeah, it was messed up the way that the two, you know, uh, representatives from Park and Rec voted for it and then. You know. Didn't support it when it went to their body, but. The, the feedback that those commissioners gave. Right? They, they put a lot of thought into that. And we gotta respect that. I mean, we can't just disregard it. That's, that's not fair to them. So, um. You know, like the way that this thing is written right now. I could, I, I, you know, I, I can't support it as is, but I, I would, I would definitely support. You know, really making it right. Like you said, Madam Mayor, you know, we gotta make it right and, and, and kind of. In a sense, kicking someone out, it doesn't, is not making it right. So.
Who are we kicking out, Cliff?
We're, we're eliminating the process that was originally set up. Right? To have it, to get the feedback from the full Park and Rec Commission. That's, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're eliminating. And in, and I agree that I don't think that's a step that's needed. But I think what is needed is to have a, a public committee that has the same. Um, that the same structure, the same, you know, ability to discuss amongst themselves. Without having two council members there. That's, we don't do that with any of the other commission and committee members. Right? And, and I, I get it. There's, there's, there's that money out there. Right? And it's significant, right? It's gonna be in the tens of millions of dollars. And so maybe we need to have some, some other structure in place. But um. You know, the way it is, the way it is right now, it's. It, it, you know. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's healthy. And, 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 and. We should, we should do better.
So you're willing to have a completely. Non-Park and Rec, non-city council. Um, group of people who. We don't, we don't know really where their mindsets are at about anything. And we're gonna say, here's a million dollars, go spend it.
You know, in the end, we are the ones that spend the money. They don't spend the money.
But we'll go through, we'll go through another two-year process without any of our guidance or input from Park and Rec who. Are already engaged in being in the Park and Rec situation. They're the ones who want Park and Rec. Programs, whatever it is to be perfect. Obviously, we're got, we're guarding the money as well. So if we have nine people who are just. Community members at random and we're saying, you got a million dollar budget to go figure out a piece of art. That scares the heck out of me. And I could not go along with that.
You know, one of the things that, um. You know, when this process was put together by the Park and Rec Commission, when we asked them to do it. They didn't reinvent the wheel. Right? They looked at other cities and they saw how they did it. Right? And so, um, you know, there are plenty of excellent ex- um, we have. We have amazing, amazing artists in this town. Who know a lot more about art than, than we do. And we should empower them.
We have three on our committee. We have three on our committee, Camille Salmon. We have Lisa Greenlee. And we have Beth Grossman, three completely talented artists. We have someone. With an interior design business. I mean. Like there are definitely fully capable people. I will just say like, there is a lateness in the hour right now. It's 10 o'clock. We have what I imagine is going to be a very robust conversation coming up. That I would like to be mentally acute and aware for, because we, we have a lot left on this agenda. It's gonna take significant time. Today, I'm prepared to vote on amendments to this ordinance. I did not come to this meeting. Ready to evaluate scrapping an entire body and reformulating it another way. So tonight, I'm only willing to vote on these changes. I think also you have to figure out from a staff perspective, like. How much would this cost being able to get, you know? And being able to get staff in the evenings, having it in the meeting room, figuring out the schedule, because we have all these other. Committees and commissions. Does that work for the people that are currently on our body? Can they meet at that time? So. Um, I think there are ways to enhance for, for, you know, public interaction. We've talked about many of them tonight. Um, I'm willing and ready to vote on the proposed changes here. Um, I'm not willing to discuss anything beyond that, because I think that is way more of a robust conversation than we have for at this very moment.
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with you, Madison. I mean, what? What you've brought to the table is, is something that is very, very needy, right? And is going to have significance. Uh, impacts on uh, the way our town looks, not just in the near future, but you, you. Deep into the future. So why then vote on it tonight? Why, why don't you and Karen, as your committee? Take the feedback that you've received tonight and retool this and then bring it back. And if in the end, you know, the, some of the things you've incorporated, that's great and we'll, we'll discuss it again. And if that's the, the. The desire of the council to leave the structure. As is, but without, um, you know, and, and, and have council members on it. Then, then so be it. But you know, there's, there's a lot of things that have been thrown into the mix. And, and you, you're right, it is late and, and I feel that we would do a disservice. If we just kind of toss in some of the things that we've heard and then, and then. You know, and then vote on it.
We have had a lot of discussion though, as a committee. The committee reviewed this. The committee had a long conversation about it. The committee then went through the ordinance and sent in suggestions to staff. I didn't send any suggestions. I don't even know that Karen did. I never sent anything in. It was, we, our body met and reviewed and so it's like. I'm gonna go back and tell them, do it again. We reviewed it and these are the suggestions.
But this is council giving direction. Right?
This is you giving direction. This is you giving direction. I haven't heard that that is the direction that everyone has had.
Okay, well, all right. Well, you know, I, I mean, I am a council member. Just like you, and I am providing some input. I mean, if in the end, the, the full council wants to vote on this. With, with what's on, you know, on the table, then, then so be it. But I, I, I do think though that. And, and I, and I really strongly feel this way. Is that? If you're gonna have a committee, it should be just like the other committees. And it should be, you know, all the same structure and not council members on it. It just. It, it muddies the waters. And, and I, I, you know, I've seen it in action before with OSEC and it didn't work. And then when it changed. Then, then that, that committee uh, flourished.
Do we have any, Colleen?
I actually agree with Cliff. I think that. If we're gonna have committees and commissions. They all deal with budgets. They all deal with a lot of money. If this was an independent committee, they'd still have liaisons from the council. I, I think we should get it right. And, and. I, I get the sense there's, there's a lot of angles to this, as he pointed out and, and. I'm not satisfied that this revisioning guidelines covers everything. I think it covers maybe what the committee felt were. Particulars, but as Madison said, it didn't cover what to do in case there's. An impasse on who to choose. So it isn't a complete document.
So. If I may. Very briefly. I think to avoid having. These issues going forward. This document was prepared by the Arts Committee because they feel, and with staff. That this would make it workable in the moment. This may need to be revised. Excuse me?
Ingrid, you're not on mute.
This may need to be revised down the road. Um, but I think that. Park and Rec would have also um. Displeasure at being removed from this completely. Um, and I think that this is a good compromise at the moment. Um, and with that, I would make the motion to um. Implement the new guidelines for the public art ordinance.
Second.
Ingrid, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Lance.
No.
Councilmember Mackin.
No.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Yes. Okay, we are going to move on to item nine, new business. Consider approval of resolutions number twenty twenty-one dash forty-one through fifty. And twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two. Adopting pay schedules and master pay schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Cunningham and members of the council, Abby Parton, Human Resources Administrator. On November four, twenty sixteen, CalPERS issued circular letter two hundred dash zero five zero dash sixteen. Clarifying pay schedules must qua- comply with government code section. Two zero six three six and California Code of Regulations. Title two, section five seventy dot five. If an agency does not meet the requirements outlined in G C section two zero six three six and C C R title two, section five seventy dot five. CalPERS may determine an amount that may be considered to be the pay rate. On May seventeenth, twenty seventeen, the city began posting a master pay schedule that combines all. Of the pay schedules, including council member and commissioner pay. Together in one document as a master pay schedule. To avoid possible issues with CalPERS going forward. In twenty nineteen, the city reached an agreement with all employee bargaining. In 2019, the city reached an agreement with all employee bargaining groups outlining wages, benefits, and working conditions for each respective group. Staff has posted both the approved labor agreements and salary information on the city website to provide the public with access to this information. Staff is presenting for adoption tonight. The pay schedule increases for the upcoming fiscal year 2021 to 2022. In fact, though, the first full pay period in July 2021 and January 2022. Highlights of the updates to the upcoming pay schedules that have been approved in the current labor agreement are as follows. Confidential management employees, their position in this group will receive 2% pay increases in both July and January. The current filled positions in this group and their respective top step pay rates include assistant city manager at $121 and $123.42 per hour, and finance director at $100.69 and $102.70 per hour. The executive management team, the pay schedule will reflect 2% increases in both January and July. The current filled positions in this group and their respective top step pay rates include city clerk at $65.24 and $66.54 per hour. Community development director at $101.76 and $103.79 per hour. Parks and Recreation Director at $97.02 and $98.96 per hour. Lastly, Public Works Director and City Engineer at $119.12 and $121.50 per hour. Police Chief, this pay schedule will reflect 2% increases in July and January as well. The new pay rate will be $118.73 and $121.10 per hour at the top step. The Confidential Employees Group, General Employees Association Group, Mid Management and Professional Employees Group, and Police Commander. The group's pay schedule will also reflect 2% pay increases for all covered positions in January, July, and January. Brisbane Police Officers Association, the pay schedule will, will reflect a 4% increase for all covered positions in July. Lastly, International Association of Firefighters Local 2400, the pay schedule will reflect a 2.5 pay increases in July and a 2% increase in January for all covered position. Staff recommends city council to approve resolutions 2021-41 to 50 and 2021-52 so that the city is in compliance with Government Code Section 20636 and California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5, and able to work towards retaining and attracting the quality and expertise of staff required by council and the community. With that, we are happy to hear comments and answer any questions, if any. Karen, yours?
Some prefer it that way.
You don't want to talk to me?
No, I do. None from Cliff?
No.
Carrie? Madison's cat, I mean Madison? No? Okay. Do we have any public comments, Ingrid?
I don't see any hands up, Madam Mayor, and I haven't received any text messages or emails regarding this item.
Council discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-41-50 and 2021-52.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item M. Consider approval of resolution, resolution number 2021-40, confirming pay schedule for the city manager under the city manager employment agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign a second amendment to the employment agreement. I will now read, excuse me. I will now read a statement for this item. In accordance with Government Code Section 54953-C3, a summary of the city manager's salary and benefits is reported as follows. The biweekly salary for the city manager will be $10,132.73 biweekly, beginning July 2021. The city manager will receive 80 hours of administrative leave in 2021 and 2022, but such leave must be used within 12 months from the time the leave is granted. Through the city contract with the Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs, city will pay from Mr. Holstein all required contributions under the 1% at 63 formula. Consistent with the benefits provided to department heads to the city, the city manager will receive paid time off for holidays and vacation leave and is eligible for health benefits, which include vision, dental, and comprehensive medical insurance. Other benefits include life and disability insurance, as well as workers' compensation. The employment agreement also reflects a city equity loan to Mr. Holstein for his personal residence in Brisbane in the amount of $200,000. Interest in the amount of $51,500 has accrued through 2020 and will continue to accrue. The loan and interest will be repaid within six months of the manager's retirement. Upon retirement from the city, anticipated to be December 31, 2022, the city manager will receive a monthly stipend consistent with other retired executive management employees who started work for the city prior to July 2008 and retired after 2000. Any other questions?
I have one question, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
So Clay, in the, in the background here, it says that you're going to continue a city manager through at least December 31, 2022. So what does at least mean?
Well, I think that's a conversation that we will have at the beginning of next year.
All right. So you're, you're reviewing the situation.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we had a good conversation, I thought, at the beginning of this year. And to look forward to having that again early next year, and we can collectively decide on what the, the best timing for this is.
Christina is okay with being negotiable.
I did, I, I certainly did not represent.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the great work that you do. Our city, you know, is, is, has been in great shape over the years that you've, you know, led, led city hall. And yeah, just, just wanted to thank you just for doing an excellent job and, you know, and you've been also just a, a really fair city manager to, to all the council members and always given us, you know, your, your ear and your sound advice. And it's been invaluable, you know, for me as a council member to, to do my job the way that I do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madison, Terry, Colleen? No? Okay.
Never retire, Clay.
There we go. There's a comment.
That I cannot put there.
Any public comment?
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any public comment?
I have received none, Madam Mayor, and I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you. Can I get a first and a second to approve resolution number 2021-40, confirming pay schedule for the city manager under the city manager employment agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign a second amendment to the employment agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item N. Consider approval of agreement to pay consultants' costs concerning a proposed project in Sierra Point. Dawn Judkins and Kenny Hung of D E S Architects and Engineers. Staff report, please.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, member of the councils. You're aware that Health Peak, they're the ones developing the shore project on the south side of Sierra Point, the biotech campus. They've also acquired some time ago, the two buildings in the center of Sierra Point, the two tower buildings. The site also has the large surface parking lot and the parking structure. And it is their intent to redevelop that 16-acre site with some additional, substantial new additional building area, two more tower buildings, and increased parking structure. So to allow for that development, Health Peak will be required to process a number of entitlements to the city, planning entitlements, as well as going through an environmental impact report. Typical with city practice and standard practice, the developer will be obligated to pay for all the costs of processing their applications. And the agreement before you this evening outlines those requirements and sort of codifies those requirements. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the attached agreement to pay consultant costs. The developer is here this evening. I believe they are present and we're planning on doing a short presentation of their project. Given the lateness of the hour, I guess that would be the council's call if you're interested with that. With that, that concludes my comments. I'll take any questions you have.
Questions for staff?
No, this is a project that came before the Subcommittee on Sierra Point. And we did have, you know, quite a few comments. I just want to make sure that by agreeing to this consultant, we're not agreeing to this project. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is to start an entitlement process. The decision will go through a public hearing process, and the council will ultimately have the final determination as to approval, denial, modifications, et cetera. So there's no predetermination or decision being made this evening, allowing them to proceed.
Great. I think it's a pretty substantial project with a lot of information. And it certainly would be council's pleasure if they want to take that time to look at this now or not.
Madam Mayor, I got a quick question. So, John, so Health Peak owns this, this property that, that currently has two buildings and a parking garage on it, correct?
Correct.
And, and a sea of, of surface parking. And, and so there, there aren't any, like, restrictions for the property owner to, to come forth to the city and, and present this proposal to, to change, you know, the surface parking to these two new buildings plus expanding the existing parking garage. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's all private property. They have the right to make the application. This is all just a matter of the, the financial arrangements to, to confirm how those processing costs will be paid.
Okay, all right. And then, and just, just confirming what Councilmember O'Connell said, just because we would move forward with this agreement, that is in no means agreeing to the project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for staff? No? Okay. What about questions for the architects and engineers who are on standby here? Any questions for them? Colleen, can I get a nod? No? Okay. All right. I think you're off the hook. And okay, so is there any public comment on this, Ingrid?
I did want to just acknowledge that we received correspondence from Dana Dilworth earlier yesterday regarding item N. And I don't see any further emails, texts, or hands raised.
All right. Okay, council discussion? Doesn't look like we have any discussion either. Then can I get a first and a second to approve the agreement to pay consultants' costs concerning a proposed project in Sierra Point?
I'll make that.
Seven. I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. And thank you to the architects for staying such late. And thanks, John.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a request for a short break?
Absolutely. Okay, we're going to take five minutes.
The next discussion's going to be a few minutes. So.
Okay, five, five-minute break. We'll see you back in five minutes.
Thank you.
Ingrid, are we all here?
We're waiting for Councilmember Lance and Councilmember Davis.
Okay. Okay.
There she is.
Okay.
We're all here.
Are we recording or do we need to start something again? We're good?
We've, we're, we're recording as we speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I need to make a motion to extend the city council meeting. It is 10:35. I have a motion in a second to continue the meeting.
So moved. Oh, to what, 11 o'clock?
I don't think we're gonna be done by 11, but looking at this.
11:30?
I would think so.
Okay. I make the motion to extend the meeting till 11:30.
I'll second. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Lance.
Hi.
Councilmember Mackin. I'm sorry.
Colleen, you're.
Colleen, unmute.
And you just remuted yourself.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Hi.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you. Okay. Welcome back, everybody, and thank you. And I, we know it's a late night, but thanks for hanging in there. Okay. So we're moving on to item O, the Baylands Planning Process Update and Consideration of Preliminary Comments. McCall Mulhultra from MIG and Margaret Sahagi's Law Firm. Staff report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You're aware, you're aware that the developer for the Baylands, Baylands Development, Inc., or BDI as they're known, submitted a preliminary draft of their specific plan to the city earlier this spring. Since then, since that's middle, a number of activities, review activities have occurred. And I wanted to give you a quick overview of where those are and have a discussion on one particular issue. So the review steps that are underway currently, the first one is for city staff and the city's consultant team to review the preliminary plan to determine if it meets minimum legal and technical requirements for a specific plan. State law establishes a number of standards or requirements for a specific plan to be legally adequate. And what we're doing right now is to reviewing this preliminary plan to determine if it meets those standards in terms of the minimum legal requirements or technical requirements. Based on the review to date, it appears that there is some information lacking. So we will be getting back with the developer and indicating what additional information is required to make it legally adequate to start a public review process. Again, just wanted to make sure when it's clear that the ongoing technical and legal review that's underway is not a review, evaluation of policy issues or whether certain elements of the plan are good or bad, or this is not that kind of review. This is merely for technical and legal adequacy. That larger policy review will happen once the document's released for public review when it's revised. So again, no, no actions required in the council in regard to this this evening. I'm just kind of giving you an update on where it stands. The second item or second issue that's underway as well is again, a more technical issue is the question of whether the project description is adequate and supporting information is sufficient to allow for the commencement of the environmental impact report preparation. We, before that can occur, a stable project description with adequate level of detail and technical information is required. Otherwise, we really can't undertake an meaningful environmental review. So that review's ongoing. But again, we've identified some gaps of information that are gonna need to be filled before we can officially commence the EIR preparation process. So again, there's no action required on the council on this particular issue this evening. It's just an informational sort of update for you. And the third sort of thing that's going on is, is probably the kind of the primary focus of this evening. You know, the city council has long been involved with the developer in terms of making sure that the city has a proactive seat at the table in terms of making sure that community's objectives and, and goals for this project are, are advanced. And councilmembers Cunningham and Lance as the Bayland Subcommittee, in addition with Planning Commissioner Sayasan have been sort of actively looking at sort of some of these higher level concepts that the developer was proposing within the specific plan, the preliminary plan. Been at several Bayland Subcommittee meetings attended by other representatives of committees and advisory bodies for the city. And meetings with BDI to gain, in a better understanding of the preliminary plan and some of the broad goals and concepts which are foundational. The Subcommittee process was really not a formal plan review. It was really more of a dialogue between the developer and the city. You know, venue for information sharing and dialogue primarily, not, not a directed or specific review of particular components of the project or recommendations on the project. So in that spirit, councilmembers Cunningham and Lance have identified a number of sort of policy objectives and questions about the preliminary plan that they wanted to bring forward to the full council to sort of discuss, have some conversation about. And if the council as a whole shares those concerns, they can be forwarded on to the developer as they work on revising their specific plan. So again, you'll see that these comments, as they're put forward, and MIG will be giving a more elaborate presentation of some of these concepts and issues. They were attached in an overview form and attachment to your staff report. But you'll reckon, you'll, you'll notice that they're all sort of couched as suggestions or observations. They're not directed, either recommendations or, or directives to the developer that where we are in this kind of preliminary review stage would be inappropriate for the city to direct or make specific recommendations to the developer. Again, that, that's place and time is in the formal public review process, which will happen once the document's complete and the environmental document is complete as well. So really what we're talking about tonight are, are observations and suggestions for the developer. The developer can, you know, choose to incorporate those into their plan or not. That's sort of their, their prerogative. But he gives the council the opportunity, if you share these kind of observations and, and issues you'd want to share with the developer, it's your opportunity to kind of put them out there for the developer's consideration. So with that, and then just real quickly on what the process will be, if the council chooses to make some sort of recommendation, that would be forwarded to BDI along with the results of the other sort of aspects of the staff and technical review that's underway. So, so with that, I would turn the presentation over to McCall Mulhultra of MIG. Or in the council, if you have questions on the broader process, I'd be glad to answer them now. It's your pleasure.
Okay. So do you want to ask, John, any questions, council, before we move on to McCall? Or do you want to wait? Colleen, unmute yourself.
Gotcha.
There.
Yeah.
I have one. In the very last page of this, this report, item number six. The first sentence, ensure that plans for the east side of the site are compatible with existing industrial uses that are expected to remain inability. Is that just a typo or am I missing something?
That sounds like a typo to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Not seeing any. McCall, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council member. I'm just gonna share my screen and the presentation. Can you see the, the, the presentation in presentation mode?
Yes.
I'm good. Yes. Okay. Great. Thank you. So as, as John mentioned, MIT has been working with the Subcommittee to review whatever the developer has submitted. And what we are presenting out here today, this evening, are the key objectives and goals, policy goals that the Subcommittee has been discussing, which in turn builds on the community feedback that we have heard over the past few years. There's six categories that we have housed the overall policy goals and objectives. And the very first one is being inclusive. The Subcommittee clearly felt this was a critical foundational component in terms of being inclusive to people of all ages, incomes, races, abilities, abilities to use different modes of travel and being able to, being, meet the needs of the new residents. A key part of being inclusive is what is, some research have talked, is top, is creating a complete community. And when we talk about complete community, we have talked about how important it is for the Baylands development to be reflecting Brisbane at large, which is a family-friendly community, a community where children are, are important and building for the future generation is critical as the Bayland development gets realized. Usually transit-oriented developments are able to attract transit-dependent as well as young urbanites and, and have a more success also with mobile urbanites. But what usually transit-oriented development have a tough time doing is attracting more family-oriented residents, kids, schools, parks, other amenities. So the Subcommittee clearly talked about that be it land uses, buildings, open spaces, overall character, architecture, it should reflect and respect the unique character or the distinct theme in, and respect the overall development for the city of Brisbane. Ensuring that the buildings and the open spaces foster neighbor interaction and community building is crucial and critical as an overarching policy and goal. And that starts by looking at a range of housing types. Different developments all over the Bay area and the country have been able to achieve it. This is the case of the Stargill Commons in the city of Albany, which has a mix of different types of housing units, affordable rental, one, one bedroom studios, three bedrooms. And the committee discussed the need to reflect that also in the Baylands development. This is another example, the Oloni Chinovit Commons in San Jose, next to the Oloni Chinovit train station, which again, has a diversity of housing options from one to four bedrooms. But as you can see, it also has a great mix of open spaces and common shared spaces where the community can gather and, and, and foster what is very important, which is neighborhood interaction. Similarly, it does have a range of common spaces, including amenities such as the childcare center, which if we want to build a very strong family-oriented development, having these basic amenities would be critical to the success of it. We want to make sure being inclusive allows people to age, allows residents to age in place. Another example is Hannah Gardens in the city of El Cerrito, that it allows for senior housing and people of all ages and abilities. It allows a different mix of building types. But at the same time, it also ensures that there are common amenities such as a senior center on the ground floor of the mixed-use development. Complementing or being a key part of being inclusive is ensuring multimodal mobility and transit-oriented development, which is the second category of overarching policies and goals that the Subcommittee talked about. And that starts by making sure the multimodal transportation network is complemented by a supportive set of land uses. This is the plan as of now, preliminary draft, that we reviewed. And this is an example showing, yes, it's in Amsterdam, but creating these livable, interconnected land use and multimodal hubs and centers are seen everywhere. As you can see out here, you can see people walking, biking, transit. And what is just behind the thing are also cars behind, basically allowing people the opportunity, if they want to live a car-free lifestyle, they can do so. But if car is an important aspect of their life, that option is also very much open to them. The aim is to provide as many options as possible. Creating walkable, bikeable, transit-supportive hubs. And the committee talked about having more than one hub in the development would be a critical feature that should characterize this area. Uh, and then looking at making sure we have two major transit, multimodal transit areas. How do they connect? Making sure that they are well-connected from a walkability, bike-ability point of view. But also the the distance uh between them is psychologically reduced so that it is convenient and incentivizes people to take uh be them walking, biking, or taking transit to go between the different two key transit hubs that we have. Um, complementing the multimodal transport connectivity would be a well-connected shuttle system. I think we all are aware of the Emery Row Round in Emeryville, which is a good example in terms of it doesn't just connect two major transit hubs, which is the uh Bart Station as well as the Emeryville Amtrak Station. But it also connects multiple neighborhoods as well as community destinations. Um, and then, of course, yeah, driverless shuttle cars are being tested in different parts of the country, be it in Vegas or more locally in San Ramon. It is critical that all these new systems take into account the needs of people of all ages and abilities. Um, and in turn, this new multimodal connectivity, it should not just be connected within Balance. The subcommittee clearly discussed the need for it to be connected to the adjoining, for example, the trail system that exists in our city and is very important for it to be connected outside the Balance development too. Uh, the regional transit center with the Beisho Caltrain Station does provide the opportunity that it be leveraged to allow for new development that is complementary. Like, for example, in the case of Emeryville Amtrak Station, they do they do have a cluster of hotels as well as uh research and development buildings, uh labs and other complementary uses that could be explored, for example, in the Bayland development too. Uh, continuing with the discussion of the need of maximizing opportunities for land use diversity and flexibility was the third category of overarching policy goals and objectives. And it starts with trying to incorporate a more mixed-use development, not just at one place or two places in the development, but if we spread out uh more uniformly across the Bayland site. This is, of course, the Fruitvale Bart Station development with traditional and new mixed-use development that allows for mom-and-pop stores. Uh, and it also helps create open spaces um that allow for the community to gather, but also allows it to be affordable to the larger community at large and maintaining, for example, the Fruitvale Public Market uh well as allowing opportunities for other amenities that just not the Fruitvale community, but the larger Oakland community enjoys, for example, with the farmer's market. Uh, we are seeing in the past few years a continuous innovation that is happening in what we call as mixed-use development. It's not, for many years, we have been thinking of mixed use as ground-floor retail housing above. But as more and more cities are doing it, um, this is being the case in Chicago. You could have a public amenity such as a library on the ground floor and offices or housing above. Um, and similarly, uh, the city of El Cerrito, working with Bart, is doing a similar thing with their El Cerrito Bart Station. But we also know having large res- retail spaces may not always be financially feasible. But at the same time, accommodating and creating opportunities for mom-and-pop business stores, they don't have to be very deep. Uh, as more and more cities are doing, they could be liner retails and they could use the surrounding open space uh to, for example, have outdoor dining or outdoor retail, which could be more temporal in nature and allow for a large mix of uh uh new uses to happen. Um, similarly, there are lots of opportunities that express the needs of the community. The subcommittee clearly felt that that those opportunities should be evaluated. And of course, we heard uh the great presentation uh with the nursery earlier this meeting. And it would be great to allow for such opportunities to flourish and allow for more mom-and-pop stores to happen. Um, arts and culture amenities were a key element to express not just, not just the the identity of the city, but also allow for the diversity of uses. And again, as the mayor and the council member pointed, there's a huge opportunity to build on the uh relationship with the Recology San Francisco uh and integrate those opportunities in the Bayland community. Two key things, the subcommittee felt that should be clearly articulated first and foremost. The building heights and the overall design of the buildings need to reflect the overall site as well as the Brisbane context. There should be clarity uh in terms of heights should be as opposed to just to say uh the number of stories. Similarly, what was clearly expressed and a key discussion item was to explore Roundhouse as a mixed-use uh community focal point, which is accessible by all modes of travel, be it walking, biking, taking transit or driving. But it needs to be much stronger, both in its mix of uses and the reasons for not just the Bayland community, but the larger Brisbane community to come together and gather in this area. Um, and this diversity of uses can be further complemented in the uh if when we began to look at the area east of the Caltrain tracks and looking at the need for a more compelling program east of the tracks. Some of the ideas that were discussed and could should be explored as an overarching policy and goal was to look at complementary uses uh such as an innovation center or a research and development campuses uh that in turn could be complemented with the hotel and other uses. But really something that would be more robust um and would maximize the opportunity that exists both with its transit-rich connectivity as well as its very location. And they could have the scale and character that is compatible to the existing industrial uses such as recology and continue to function as a vibrant uh financially vital uh use for the city. Um, many cities across the world have done it by being respectful to the adjoining uh industrial uses and making sure they are integrating campuses and innovation center and R and D facilities along with their adjoining uses. And it's not just the building, but even the open space uh can be used to complement that overall industrial character and create the unique identity east of the Caltrain tracks. The fifth uh category, overarching category that the subcommittee discussed that builds on the community input was open spaces and recreation. And just as the land uses, there was a clear desire uh and discussion uh that there needs to be a diverse, family-oriented set of recreational uses. Uh, again, to attract more families, but also serve the needs of the larger Brisbane community. Uh, and they should include uh spaces for children, children to have active as well as passive recreation so they can grow not just physically, but provides them to grow mentally too. A good example is the Olone Park. Uh, the Linear Park is a key element being proposed by BDI. Uh, the Olone Park is in Berkeley is a similar linear element, but the diversity of open spaces it incorporates uh starts with programs, school facilities such as baseball, tennis, basketball, soccer, but is also then complemented by amenities that are used by people of other ages. Uh, they could, and they include community garden, dog park, so and so forth, as well as a children's play area. Um, having those opportunities to also serve as where it could be sculptural art. Uh, but making sure we are serving the active recreational needs of all users. Um, and having innovative ideas such as climbing walls would be very cool and also exploring the opportunity of integrating art with it. Um, as we think of recreational and open space amenities, the subcommittee discussed uh the need to integrate community gardens um and need to make sure that they are raised uh community uh gardens that are proposed along the area. And these diversity of open spaces are within 10-minute walk of each and every resident and worker. Many cities have taken the challenge uh that the trust for public land setup for our country. It could be individual neighborhoods, the city at large, that every citizen uh or just resident or worker in in our cities should have an easy and comfortable access to a usable open space. And that is the opportunity to then think we will, we may be constrained for space or maybe we may constrain financially, maybe the need is then to look at shared-use facilities, say between the new school that comes, but also the new amenities, community amenities that are provided. This is the example of Edison School, uh, elementary school combining their facilities with the city of Glendale's Pacific Park, where they share both the open uh space facilities as well as the built facilities like the pool as well as community center. And at the end of the day, all of these facilities need to take into account our future generation, our children, because that those are the ones who are going to really go through this experience of enjoying Balance foot to its fullest uh built out. The very last category of overarching policy and goals was sustainability. Um, and the subcommittee clearly discussed the need to be holistic in the overall approach of a meaningful, sustainable plan. Um, exploring the options that it meets needs of energy, but also food and other sustainable sources was discussed. Um, it starts with, of course, exploring opportunities and meeting the measured JJ goals of a net-zero neighborhood, as has been done, for example, in West Village in Davis or the Rayner Wister Community in Seattle. Uh, these are well-established net-zero neighborhoods. Um, and then, of course, the more recent Tillamook Row in Portland, which is not just net-zero. Uh, but make sure that there is battery storage within the common community meeting room that also has other amenities such as a gym, other community gardens, the cistern that allows for water be to be stored during times uh when they do not have access. Uh, really creating an opportunity that still allows for the wide variety of uses. In fact, it has one-to-four-story bedroom houses. They are affordable housing for rental uh housing um and also for ownership housing, really the diversity that is created um that we discussed in category one. Going to the very last set of sustainability policy and goals that the subcommittee discussed was looking at opportunities. If we put trees, they they provide shade. But can they also provide food security, as was explored in the case of Village Homes? I think nearly 40 years ago, and it's a well-established case study that in turn then creates financial income for the maintenance of the streets. And continuing that with ensuring safe and green roadways, protected bike lanes, but also water that is treated properly and allowing for opportunities for solar and wind uh powered energy generating sources, uh combining them with with uh community gardens in race beds. But just not looking at the open space, but exploring it potentially in along the walls of buildings as has been done in different cities. Finally, uh, the committee discussed that this, number one, this development is going to be built over a number of years, perhaps 10, 20 years. Um, there there are certain market realities today, but they may change tomorrow. And the same goes with the technology. They are well-established, tested technology of achieving various sustainability and other goals, but there are other uh technologies that are being tested right now. The need for the plan to be flexible to accommodate the future technology and market changes as a result becomes critical so as to achieve the overarching community goals of being an innovative, ecologically sustainable neighborhood, being physically vital as well as economically diverse. And with that, uh, I would give it back to you, John.
Uh, thank you, McCool. So do you have any questions for us? We're glad to entertain them. Um, again, I think whether the subcommittee wants to make their remarks or we throw it up open to discussion is up to the mayor.
Let's all uh let you lead us. I'm mute.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, you know, it it's been great working with you uh and our our team uh at the subcommittee level and trying to, you know, trying to put out, you know, some some concepts, right, some Brisbane concepts that um, you know, that 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 might be interesting for our community and and all of you. I mean, for the last year or so, most of the the images that we've seen have come from BDI. And um, you know, it's nice to get that that fresh uh uh perspective. You know, Karen, like things that we talked about, like the the private-public partnerships. I think uh that's a really interesting concept, you know, for us to explore. I think there's there's lots of opportunities there where um, you know, whether we're working with school district or, you know, working with, you know, a company, right? And 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 finding mutual benefits. I think uh, I think I think that's pretty cool. You know, the uh, that that Tillamook uh Row in Portland. I I really, I really love that concept. I mean, like those pictures, you know, where you, it's it's just very intimate. And it feels communal and 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 it reminded me of of some of the the neat features of living in 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 Brisbane. You know, where you got a stairway or an alleyway and 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 then, you know, like on the side of the building, there was that art. And and then we have our our um fire hydrants that, you know, you're walking on the street and there's there's a piece of art or, you know, midtown, there's the mural. Um, and and so that that whole kind of feel of like, hey, this 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 should be a community for everyone. And 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 I'm glad that we started off with being inclusive. Uh, that's 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 so cool. And um, yeah, you know, you know, Karen, you know, some of those recreational things that you've you've really highlighted, you know, that 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 bring out, um, you know, having fun. Yeah, so, yeah, I I I I thank you, McCool, you know, for that. Um, so, yeah.
So for me, this this is so far away from mentally where I live. Um, it it's been a challenge to think, you know, what could be? And how could it be? And and for us to be able to now as a city council say, okay, you know, this was this was our first attempt at landing on some ideas and thought processes that that may or may not ever come to fruition. But it's like, you know, what, you know, what what can we do? And for for me, I just kept coming back to the idea that, you know, active, you know, act activities that that got us moving were you know, act activities that that got us moving were kind of centered to my thought process. Because, you know, if we're going to have a community on the Baylands, I think it is imperative that we all do the best we can to make that an inclusive thing. And I and I honestly think it's a long, long way away. But unless we keep sort of chipping away at that block and thinking about, you know, how how can we stimulate some great ideas? So that's kind of where my head went. And so I I went looking online and just, you know, what are what are the countries doing in situations like this? What are other areas doing in situations like this? And I'm just going to bring this one idea back is that, you know, we we've all seen the preliminary ideas of the freeway going across to one oh one. And it's kind of like, oh, gosh, freeway, what do you what do you do with an underpass on a freeway? And then I found this rock climbing wall on a freeway. And it's like, wow, you know, if you if you really start looking and I would charge us all with looking a lot. We can probably add a whole bunch of great ideas to a potential mix of of thought processes. And so I spent a lot of time doing that, as these guys know. Gave them seventy seven pages of stuff I found that just looked like something that might work for us. So that's my comments, please. Who was calling? You want to start or no you do? Terry, you want to start or no you do?
Well, you know, I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work and the consultants' work on, you know, getting some dreams out there on paper and and getting a wish list of what Brisbane could envision for this area. You know, ultimately, it comes down to feasibility and developers' will. I don't really have anything to add. You guys have looked at a lot of the possibilities. And I think if a BDI took half of your suggestions, we would be in remarkable shape to start. But I really don't have anything to add as far as my wish list. I I think I look at a lot of this with some skepticism about what would work in our climate. And I always love seeing happy people sitting outside playing dominoes. And think, hmm, how many days a year will they be able to do that? But with climate change, who knows? And then also when when buildings get built around and then there's protected spaces. I guess you'd call them protected spaces, you know, that can change what the microclimate is, you know. My backyard is different than Cliff's backyard as far as microclimate. So, you know, there's always those possibilities, but I don't really have anything to add, especially at this hour. I think you guys have put out a lot of lofty goals. And like I said, I hope that BDI looks at some of these suggestions and finds some that work for their vision and can bring it back with pen and paper and show what's possible out there.
Madison, thank you, Terry.
Oh, I was just, I mean, I was just kind of curious if like the subcommittee had any comments that they wanted to, you know, wanted to make prior to the rest of us. Going since this is the thing you've been working on.
I kind of.
Did your overpower thing. I'd, okay, I didn't know if you had any, Cliff had anything else.
Well, you know, I mean, I think over the the weeks, I guess months too, you know, this has been a, you know, kind of a collaboration with Karen, just putting forth ideas and and, you know, and then having a really good. You know, consultant staff to to take those ideas and craft them in a way that you know, puts out puts out goals, right? It's out, you know, things that, you know, potentially could happen. And in 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 the way you do that is is by getting those really great examples from other places. You know, one of the things that that, you know, has been, I think, really important for all of us is is you know, using those transportation modes in an efficient way. And having a variety of of complementary uses around some kind of transit hub. And and I, you know, I thought I thought you did a really great job, McColl, of of articulating that. And you know, I, yeah, I mean, I I I hope that we can, we we can achieve that 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 dream of of really having a true transit oriented development. Folks that live there and folks that 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 work.
So the, you know, understanding that this development is probably going to take, I don't think ten years, I think ten to forty years to come to fruition in the best case scenario. That that if we all put on the hat of thinking future forward, what does what does that look like? I I I don't even know. I mean, looking around us right now at the the possibilities of these driverless electric solar powered shuttles and and not just thinking. You know, because right now, I I think the focus is way too bicycle oriented for for my liking. But just just a thought that there are so many other possibilities that are going to come forth. And, you know, who who rides a bicycle? Not me. I can't get on a bicycle. I want to get in a shuttle. Now, you youngins can can ride those bicycles. So all these other technologies are being developed. And so we just have to be dreamers about and and put forward the best dream possible. You know, as an aspirational goal, you know. I I I want, I want to be in the shuttle with the old guy that's got the cane and say, take me to the top of San Fernando Mountain, you know? So hopefully, there was some stimulating ideas around all those things that that came forth tonight. And McColl, Ellie, Lloyd, you know, you guys have just done the most amazing job from my perspective, and I thank you very much. Send it back to the rest of you for comments to the people who did all this hard work. I'm not saying anything. Come on now. Come on, John, you say something.
I I think want to hear from your fellow council members. I mean, I think we have a fairly focused list of sort of of goals or aspirations. And so I think, you know, what we're looking for from you ultimately is when you concur with that list, that would be something we use as the basis for our correspondence to BDI. If there are things you want to adjust on that list or add to that list, that's kind of really what we're hoping to get from you this evening. So we can move this conversation forward with the developer.
So, so could, can I ask, I just have a question, sorry, Madison. John, since it's so late and everyone's going to get a little punchy real soon. Can, is there an opportunity or Tom, whoever, can we sit on this and make comment back? Some other time when we've slept on it. Tom, I think this is a question for you. Not sure.
You can always provide informal comment, but this is for the public forums. If you want to come back to it, I would encourage you to do it in a in a later council meeting.
Mayor, if 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 we could certainly come back at the July fifteenth meeting. Maybe I'd give everyone an opportunity to kind of think through what's been presented tonight and and then confirm that this is the or confirm or amend at that point in time. I think we we do feel from a staff level, given where BDI is in their process, that it 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 would be appropriate for us to have comments back to them this summer. So I think if we can aim for the July fifteenth meeting, we can meet that goal.
I mean, if if everybody's got this presentation to look at in their own time and sort of think about it and then make comments, I mean, tonight, everyone's like, okay, it looks great, let's go home. Because we're all super tired, it's eleven o'clock at night, you know? So I I want very thoughtful feedback from everybody else on the the city council. Because, you know, Cliff and I have lived this one for quite a bit and there's a lot of work gone in from, you know, Lloyd and Ellie and McColl, lots and lots of work gone into it. So I wouldn't want like, just, you know, let's make a snap decision on what we, yeah. You know, can we, can we sleep on it and bring it back, you guys?
Yeah, it's a great suggestion.
Me too.
We do have a member from the public that I think has stayed here this whole time.
I'm I'm sure. Want to make sure that that you guys are okay with that. Terry, you okay with that?
I'm in no hurry.
Okay, so thumbs up.
I mean, tonight I am, but yeah, overall.
You know, McColl, I would hate to just go, oh, hey, you know, three seconds later, we're going to give you all the the feedback. Because I don't think we can tonight, to be quite honest. So let's uh, let's see what the public comment is.
Go ahead, Roland. I did also want to acknowledge Roland just emailed also city council members regarding this item. And also Dana Dana Dilworth emailed a comment yesterday.
Is it, does anybody want to publicly comment right now?
Roland.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Ah, okay, great. Do I get two or three minutes?
He's not from here, so don't tell him. He's got five.
No, I I I don't need five. So the 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 first comment I I would like to make is is that for some reason, I did not see that presentation in the packet. Because I, this took me completely by surprise. But but I hope that you have some opportunity of reading the email I sent you, I believe. Council member Davis Lentz and or kind of maybe familiar with the content. It's the thing I find really, so I'd just say surprising and disappointing is that seven years later, there is somehow no conversation about relocating the Caltrain station. Why is it still tucked up there, you know, you know, in the corner? And you still have the east and the west side divided by the tracks. So I'm just going to summarize the proposal I made seven years ago. And quite frankly, something's going to have to happen because as you probably heard, there are some mega developments taking place, you know, right up the road from Brisbane, less than seven miles as a matter of fact. But the fact is, you got all this contaminated land and you're going to have to remediate it. And the best way to remediate it is to bring a ton of really, really clean clean dirt on top of it and raise the land. Another point in time, the opportunity that you have is to make the tracks completely disappear. So the tracks stay on the existing level, but all the ground around it rises. At that point in time, the tracks essentially disappear. And you can build anywhere that you want on top of it. And I wish we could have the slide that shows the Bayshaw Park. I don't know if the roundhouse has to be where the roundhouse is, but as example, you could have Bayshaw Park on top of the station. But next week, I I plan on reaching out to developer. You've been talking about p trees. I'm going to talk to developer about a p tree that's going to blow their mind off. It's a station in London that was not supposed to be there in the first place, but the developer really wanted one. So they built one and then they built six thousand houses on top of the station. And guess what? Suddenly, a tunnel, you know, miraculously appeared and went to their station. And now they're getting, I think it's a twenty eight trains an hour in east direction. So that's really what I want you to start thinking about is what if, what if we did this? And as I said earlier, you really got to start thinking about it because something will have to happen. Because of everything else that's going, you know, up the road, not just up the road, but the entire, the entire region. Link twenty one is basically linking twenty one counties by rail. And and Brisbane is a second part of the conversation. Because as I mentioned in my email, you know about two count, eight count trains, you know about four high speed trains. What you don't know about is another eighteen trains on top of that, that are going to be coming across the bay. And that cannot possibly go down the peninsula. They have to turn around and have to go back. Wrapping up, I didn't get, I didn't get my clap. Okay, so you have to think about this. I believe my proposal is worth thinking about. And hopefully, we can revisit this when you're ready, a couple of weeks or a couple of months down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, okay, I think I just muddied the waters. Tom, what do I need to do now? So we've had public, is there anybody else from the public who wants to speak? Ingrid?
I have received no further comments.
Thank you. They're all asleep. Okay, council discussion. I'm I'm hoping that we're we're all in agreement that we can bring this back to the next meeting. And everybody can have a look at it and make some comments to, who who should they make the comments to? Clay?
They can, if if you have comments or if you want, you know, further clarification on something, you can just get ahold of myself or John and we we can do that. If you want to, you could just entertain a motion to defer this until the July fifteenth meeting.
Well, I I would like to make a motion to defer to the July fifteen meeting. But in the in the interim, I would love everybody to have access to the presentation so they can digest it and make make intelligent comments.
I'll second the motion.
I did, I make, okay. Everyone okay with that? Okay, so we're all we're all cool vote. I guess I made a motion.
I'm sorry, the second was from Councilmember Lentz.
Oh, Lentz, sorry. I thought he made it. It's too late, guys.
I know. That's why we can't.
Member Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And we have, we have fireworks going off in the distance.
We have fireworks at eleven twenty eight at night. Isn't that wonderful? Okay, so thank you so much. Item ten, staff reports. P, city manager's report on upcoming activities.
This is going to be super quick, just to let you and members of the community know that on July fifteenth council meeting, we will be doing a presentation on the hybrid meeting format that we are moving to in the fall. We're going to be having some of your boards and commissions try this out during the summertime. This will allow for people to be present in the council chambers as well as to continue to use the Zoom. So both options will be available. So we will make a full presentation to this on this to you at the July fifteenth meeting.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that take into account the new meeting laws?
We're in constant conversation with the city attorney over the status of of the governor's orders. And and we will make obvious adjustments based on on that. So we will be in compliance when we get come to September or earlier with the other meetings.
Okay, just just as an FYI, I heard on NPR that they were going to be back to in person, I assumed only in September.
The plan that has been announced by the governor is by the end of September to be back. But because of a separate discussion he had had and a letter exchange, he then proceeded to make a statement that said, I intend that everybody will be back, but it's to be determined. So it's clear as mud, sort of like the mask thing for a couple of days, but it it will not be resolved. It will be well, it will be resolved well in advance of the actual date.
Good, thank you.
Good. That that was it from you, Clay?
That's it.
All right. Okay, Mayor, item eleven, Mayor Council Matters. Creation of an add. Creation of an ad hoc subcommittee for transportation demand management policy. Can we defer this? Do we need to do this right now?
We could defer it to the July fifteenth.
Okay, let, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, item R, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Who wants to say anything?
I'm not sure that I can even remember what I've done yet earlier today, much less over the last two weeks.
Okay, we're we're going to have to skip this. Is that all right? Everyone's too tired.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, we can't skip this.
Just look, no, no, you can. I think the only thing that you legally have to do still this evening. Unless. The council desires otherwise, as you should. Inquire about item T, written communication, so you've done it, and oral communications. The others are all discretionary and can be moved past because you dealt with the one action item by motion.
Okay, great, thank you. So. Item T, well, we will be re-meeting on July fifteen, but item T. Ingrid, written communications, please.
Sharing the screen now.
Thank you.
We receive a communication from SMC Stonewall. Inviting the council to the LGBTQ training, Kristen Wang, public comment for Brisbane Housing Authority workshop on June three. Lillian Straw, open items forward, Trucks on Valley Chronic. Tony Varios, Brisbane Fire Safety, Kevin Fryer, comments for tomorrow's council meeting and further request. Renee Marmian, letter to city council, Dana Dilworth. Sierra Point fourteen story project, comments on Baylands process, item O, and correction on Baylands document.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve, oral communications, number two. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on an item not on our agenda?
We missed Roland's raised hand back in item P. Roland, would you like to make oral communications, number two?
Yeah, I'd like to make a brief comment on item P, if that's okay.
One second, please. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so earlier during my first general public comment, I sent you the new governor's order with the changes. To the Brown Act being extended to September thirtieth. The reason he's extended it is that there is going to be legislation that's going to make permanent changes to the Brown Act. And I recommend that council or anybody else track AB seven oh three. This is where the changes will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. We are tracking that one. Uh, anybody else, Ingrid?
No further, no further text correspondences and members of the public wish to speak.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience and your lengthy time at a meeting. We now adjourn to the city council meeting of July fifteenth.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.